Are we ready, Kay?
Yes, we're ready now.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Again, welcome to our quarterly strategic session. We've got a number of issues we're going to try to cover this morning. And quickly, I think I'll turn it over to to our city manager, Scott Sanders. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, Council, for finding the time so we can get together and take care of several of these topics in one day. You're going to see that with the agenda, we have several updates for you. We have opportunity to dive into policy discussion on our scrubs. And we do have some training that will come up here around nine o'clock or so that is required that we we bring back to you every couple of years. And so, again, I appreciate the time we're able to spend here. In between, if we have a few minutes, I thought it might be helpful if there are committees that the council sits on that they they'd like to give any kind of a report. If you want to think through that, we may have some short breaks in between and an opportunity to maybe get some updates if desired by the council on things like DART, MPO, and whatnot. So those opportunities are available to us as well. So we might as well jump right in. I think we've got Steve on the line to start us out with the CIP update. Steve, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Steve Neber, city engineer. Thank you for the opportunity to to give an update on our capital improvement program. Quite a bit of large initiatives going on, and that's what we're going to cover, as well as kind of take a quick look at the the bid schedule as well. So here was a street up on the screen is a street that everyone's familiar with, Cherry Street downtown. You can see it running right by the Dart Central Station. Last year was resurfaced and converted to a following our complete streets policy, converted to a, you know, reducing the street from four lanes to three lanes and adding bike lanes. So a big, huge improvement. Very proud of how this project turned out. And there's the before and after photos for everyone to see. So again, we're going to talk about some of the major initiatives that are occurring in our city, starting with bridges, then going through sewer separations, some of our large stormwater and flood mitigation projects, touch on sidewalks and the local option sales and services tax, what's upcoming for that. And then we'll talk about the bid schedule. I do want to remind the, for the folks, the general public that are on the screen, you know, I'm very proud of the the new the the new website that we have at the city. And right on the main page of the website, you'll find a, if you're kind of wondering, I see some construction going on outside. Is it a city project? You can click on the projects map, and this is a map, a GIS-based map that you can click on, type in an address, zoom to an area. And if you see, there's usually a symbol or line work that will show what where the construction work is. Click on it, and you could see what it is and who to contact if it's a city project. And there's another link to it. You can get to it through the engineering page as well. And here's what happens when you when you zoom into a certain area and you click on one of these links, you can see it pulls up a menu describing what it is and who you can call if you have questions. And it also does link to the CIP, so you can see how the project is even funded as well. Bridge replacements. So a lot, lot of bridge work been accomplished here. The Grand Avenue Bridge, Court Avenue Bridge, Southwest First Multi-Use Trail Bridge, all completed in the past couple of years. Locust Street, you know, right outside of City Hall here, nearing completion, putting up the metal scallops, the panels that go on the hangers. I'll stick to the bridge. It's kind of arch look. The Scott Avenue Bridge nearing completion as well will be finished up this summer. And East 30th, that's the picture in the upper right corner here. You can see them doing the deck pore and it's kind of a cool shot with the skyline in the background on top of the bridge there. But there's the, they're doing the deck pore. This was done about a week and a half ago. The deck pore. So this this bridge is, project's on schedule. The bridge will be open to traffic on State Fair. If it's not, if it's not complete, pardon the end completion date is the end of '21. If it's not complete, the bridge will still be open for traffic for for State Fair in August, and then it may have to be reclosed if there's work remaining after the after the fair. We've got Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, the southbound bridge over Raccoon, as well as University Avenue Bridge over Des Moines River, and then a few patches on the Sixth Street Bridge over Des Moines River. Those three projects are under construction right now. They'll be finished the end of this year. Just kind of do some rehabilitation work. The next one, the next big ones that are coming are Second Avenue Bridge over Des Moines River and the and Berlin Drive. Again, those are the ones that will start 2022 and go into 2023. And then Southwest 8th and Southwest 9th, the biaducts, those will need rehabilitation. Those will start later this year, being completed next year. And then some of the big ones that are coming, rehabilitation of Guthrie Avenue over the Union Pacific Railroad. That biaduct, that's that one will take place in '23, and then continuing with the river bridges, Walnut Street. That that replacement will start late next, late next year and be completed in '24. That one will be similar to the Locust Street and Grand Avenue Bridge. And then the others that are in the in the list, there are Southwest 9th over Middle Creek, that that's a full replacement. And then Fluor Drive over Raccoon River, that rehabilitation, there's that's been talked about in some recent public meetings in conjunction with some of the work that's proposed over at 18th Locust and Grand. That one, the city's been, has been successful in securing some federal money to help for the rehabilitation of that one in 2025.
Steve, do you want to take questions as we go, or you want to wait till the end? Bill's got his hand up and may want to touch on something that you've already suggested, maybe Second Avenue Bridge or something. You okay taking questions as we go?
Yes, that'd be perfectly fine. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Steve, this is, this was one of my pet projects from before you even became the city engineer. But I have been approached probably five or six years ago by Dave Freilack. You know, his family used to manage the Berlin Marina. And even after that, Jack Doherty over at Captain Roy's brought this up. I have been campaigning to get lights put on these bridges. I'm talking about the University Avenue Bridge, the Second Avenue Bridge, and the Sixth Avenue Bridge for quite some time. Now, we're doing some work on these bridges. I would think now would be an absolute great time to put some lights and on these bridges to highlight, especially if we're going to go with the Water Trails Project. This will highlight everything that we've been doing here in the city. Is there any plans or, better yet, let's make some plans to put lights on these bridges as we're doing work on them. I'm hoping that this this will, I mean, we see downtown is lit up like a Christmas tree. Looks absolutely fantastic. But now we need to come into our neighborhoods and make our neighborhoods glisten just as much as downtown does. I certainly would love to see that. And I would, and I'm going to push it even harder. I think we need to make that part of the plan when we do these bridges. Does that make sense?
Yep, Councilman. Yep, you've been bringing this up for, I agree, you've brought this up numerous times. And and and, yeah, we we are part of the Second Avenue Bridge Bridge Projects. You know, those are full replacements, rehabilitation. The lights are are designed for for those projects. So you're spot on. That's the time to do that. And and as part of that project, the the Sixth Avenue, you know, the Sixth Avenue repaired, the minor patching repairs and University Avenue over the work that's going on now, those are are isolated, just repairs. The University Avenue Bridge is a repair due to a fire in the east that happened under the bridge. And the Sixth Avenue Bridge is just a minor patching, so that those products didn't really allow us to, there was not a full rehabilitation or replacement. So that's why the lighting wasn't as part of those. But but the Second Avenue Bridge projects, the lighting is is designed and included in those.
Well, then I'm going to ask Scott, can we find some money, at least, I mean, we can work on the Sixth Avenue over time. But if we're working on a fire underneath the University Avenue Bridge, we're working on that bridge now. Let's get something done there. I mean, that that's going to be the the highlight. You're going to see that from downtown Des Moines. It's going to highlight what we have in our neighborhoods. This is, I can't see us missing an opportunity like this. We can, I can, I can put off Sixth Avenue because we have some other ideas there. But Second and the University Avenue Bridge need to be done soon. Let's get this doing. We want to, this, we talk about promoting our neighborhoods and and doing this all downtown, and nothing in our neighborhoods does not bode well for us. Let's get something done here. Scott, can we get in the budget somewhere to get that done?
So not in this cycle, but we absolutely can look at it as a separate project that 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 can be, that way we can evaluate putting investment in a bridge that that may have additional changes that are necessary coming up. So we need to fit it in so that we're not, you know, wasting any of that, that it's something that can be, you know, have a longevity to it. So what what I hear you saying is push further with a separate initiative that does not necessarily attach to a rehab or, you know, a smaller project, but rather can be identified as just a bridge lighting project. So we can absolutely throw that into the mix with the next cycle here that that gets started in about two, about three months from now.
That's getting more in line. And, you know, I've even talked to Bravo, you know, trying to make that a community event. So, I mean, wherever we get the funds, it's it's it is a community betterment that we're getting things done here. And I I can, I can't tell you enough how many people come to me and say, why don't we have this thing lit up? So the sooner we can move on that, I can, Second Avenue is great. I'd like to get the university in in our radar as soon as we can. And, yeah, I don't know, maybe have some community involvement, what we want the lights to look like. But the sooner that we get this moving, Scott, I'm I'm all in favor, but I think it just is a great addition to our neighborhoods.
Okay.
Especially in front of the Water Trails Project. This will really be an excellent selling point.
Okay, we'll put it in the next of the CIP conversation this next cycle.
Thanks for putting up with my rant.
Thank you, Councilman. So you can see a lot of, a lot of work going on. And, you know, so I, you know, I'm happy to reply, I'm proud of the condition of our our bridges. Every two years, the city inspects 52 street bridges and 24 culverts in the city. And and this kind of a kind of a snapshot for comparison purpose, we talk about structurally deficient is a term that's used by, in the National Bridge Inspection Inventory. And just so you know, structural deficient does not pose, mean that a bridge poses any risk to safety. But there are significant structural or maintenance issues that need to be addressed. And so that's kind of a term we use to, we we rate bridges. In 2013, there were 14 structurally deficient bridges. In 2019, there were seven. And those seven were Scott Avenue, East 30th, Second Avenue, Southwest 9th over Middle Creek, the Southwest 9th Biaduct over Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, the Walnut Street Bridge, and the Fluor Drive Bridge over Raccoon River. Every one of those you can see on this list is designed underway, under construction, being being addressed. So that's an incredible accomplishment. We do not have any load posted bridges. We addressed the last one was South Union over Middle Creek. So there are no load posted bridges in the city. So very proud of the the progress that, and the condition of the city, city Des Moines bridges, so.
I appreciate that you added that, Steve, because there is a lot of messaging out there that the state of Iowa has serious concerns with their bridges. I just want the council to understand, we have addressed the bridges in Des Moines. Thanks.
All right. Another major initiative, our our sewer separations in our neighborhoods here. As you know, we have a handful of areas, which is very, very common in river cities that had, that have combined stormwater and sanitary sewer systems. And part of working with the DNR and and the state that we've got a long-term control plan to eliminate the combined sewer overflows that you can see here on the map. And there is a goal to to get these done by the end of 2023. So the city has made substantial, I went the wrong way, the city has made substantial progress in our sewer separations to do that. Here is a snapshot of the last phase of the Lower Oak and Highland Park Sewer Separation, which is the Lower Oak and Highland Park Sewer Separation is complete. And so here's a, you can see a photo. When we do these sewer separations, we do a couple of things. We we install brand-new storm sewers who are separating the flows. So the intakes that were going to the sanitary sewer are taken off and added to a new storm sewer. It's been really improved, really improved, improves drainage and flow capacity there. And then we also incorporate some green infrastructure such as this. This is Tiffin Avenue or the new Tiffin Avenue, which is a pervious pavement. The brick pavers are designed so that the water goes down between the joints using a clean stone. You know, it's normally, a lot of, not a lot of times, stone has fines in it. In this case, we use stone that does not have fines. So promotes the water to filtrate down into the ground, so promoting groundwater recharge as well as slowing the flows down. So again, Lower Oak Highland Park, complete. Near West Side, the first couple of phases shown in orange and green, orange and red are complete. And Phase 3, the shown in green is about 90% complete with the 24th Street south of University remaining. And then the final phase is underway and halfway. There's a detention basin here, and that includes some storm sewer. So we've got the detention basin north of I-35, and we've got some sewer installation along Clark Street from 21st to Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway as well to do to do with that one. So again, nearing, seeing the finish line in that one. Riverbend King Irving, another lot, another one that the for phases, one shown in orange, two A shown in red, and two B shown in purple. Those are all complete. And Phase 3A, this one is, will be under construction this summer. We had to work with the Corps of Engineers to do this one. This is the outflow of the, it's shown in green up by the Des Moines River. And then the final phase, shown in yellow, is coordinated along with Second Avenue. That, you know, that one will be done in, the sewer work will be in 2023. We talked about, again, a lot of work in that quarter. The bridge work starts up in '22, sewer work in '23, with the road work phased with it '23, finishing up by 2025.
Steve, Joe has his hand up.
Yep.
Steve, I think it's important, once you get through this, let us know how much we've invested already into our sewer separation and our sewer since we've made that initiative and we've, we've said we're going to put more money into it and where we're at and where we still need to be. So I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I I think that's important to to let us, to let the public know what we've done.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Yep. So these, it all, let me go to one more here with this, this Western Ingersoll Sewer Separation. So the four projects, just as kind of a reference point, the four projects that we just flashed up here, Lower Oak Highland Park, Near West Side, Riverbend King Irving, and Western Ingersoll, those four projects cost about $75 million, just those four alone. And there's been work done by the city before that, as well as the, our partners in the Wastewater Reclamation Authority are doing a substantial amount of work as well. And so we can send a snapshot of that. But these four projects alone are $75 million with really probably less than, you know, about $15 million worth of work remaining of that. And actually, when I say that, that's work is underway, including this one, Western Ingersoll Sewer Separation. This is the last sewer separation. This one, the the city council just authorized on Monday the award for the biggest phase of this, Phase 1, shown in yellow for $9 million. And so that one will be underway. The final phase, Phase 3, shown in blue, is is supposed to be bid in '22, completed by the end of '23, timing with kind of our schedule. I saw this so.
Yep, Steve, Bill has his hand up.
Yep, yep.
And Steve, yeah, that, to the untrained eye, this appears to me like the light at the end of the tunnel. Do you envision that we're going to, I mean, 75 million, we've had to bond for that. That's a lot of money. Do you envision this being the end result? We won't ever have to see this again, at least in our lifetime? Or do you see something coming up down the road that we may have to budget for?
And in terms of sewer separations, yeah, yes, you're correct. The end of '23 is our goal to complete what we said we would do, our goals from the long-term control plan and the sewer separation efforts. That this, along with the WRA, will be, will be installing their major Ingersoll Run Sewer up MLK and then kind of cutting up through kind of 18th Street on the western side of downtown and over to Ingersoll. That, that, that's major sewer by the WRA, which will, which will also take place, the bulk of it in '23. That, that's, that's it for for this long-term control plan. So for terms of sewer separation.
Steve, the same with bridges. And I understand that, you know, Scott says that, you know, we're on top of our bridge. How much have we invested in a lot of the replacements of our bridges just over the last four to five years?
You know, I can, let's see, I got too many windows. I could pull up the CIP, and I could send that information to you, but it's, it's the, there's no question, the city, the city and city council have been very aggressive to make sure our bridges are in safe condition. I mean, it's, this is an incredible feat, feat, you know, incredible accomplishment to sit, to say the least. And and we'd have to combine, go through and combine, you know, the city has also been working with the MPO to secure a lot of federal money to help, to help with those bridges as well. Locust Street, Grand Avenue, Fluor Drive, Scott Avenue, Southwest First, Court Avenue, all Southwest, I'm sorry, East 30th. All those bridges, the city worked with our folks at the MPO and the state and the federal government to get a lot of federal money for those bridges, and we could, we could, we could report that.
I mean, it, it would probably be easy to say $100 million?
I debate, depending on the timeframe, yeah, I mean, just the, the Locust, Locust Street, Court Avenue, Southwest First, and Scott Avenue Bridges, those were $22 million alone, just for those river bridges. And so when you throw Grand Avenue, there's another 10 million, the East 30th Bridge, another eight or nine million. It's, we are definitely talking big, big numbers to make sure our bridges are in in good condition and not, not load posted, not structurally deficient, so.
Yeah, I think it's important that that our message that we are reinvesting in our infrastructure, and we have been for a good many years. So I think that's important. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, the councilman brings up a good point. I I hope people see the theme of this presentation. You know, this is stuff that our council has, you know, they've listened to our our residents so over the past several years. And, you know, when you talk about infrastructure, streets, and stormwater, you know, this, I, you know, I'm proud. This this presentation shows, I mean, the city is is doing what they said they would do. And so I want you to kind of think about this as we go through some of the conversations that have had in the public meetings that have been had a few years ago, we were talking, when we've been talking about this stuff, this is incredible progress. And so, so I want you to think about that as we continue through this here. We talk about stormwater flooding. You know, here's one in Highland Park, Hamilton Drain. The FEMA has remapped their floodplain maps, and so there is an area that, in Highland Park, that is in the map floodplain. And and so the city has developed a plan to improve that, and that's, I'm very excited that to report this one. This one's underway. And I'll show you some pictures here. So here's, here's our overall plan for the Hamilton, what's known as the Hamilton Drain watershed. You know, this is the one where you can see in the red line, there's an old wood box, put it in, you know, it's called the Rocky Place Storm Sewer installed in the 1930s. And this, this area has been, you know, like I said, mapped in the special flood hazard area. It has experienced flooding. So the city has developed a conceptual plan to 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 improve this drastically. There's been several public meetings on this, going back from October 2017 through 2019 through 2020, to obtain input on these improvements. It's a big plan. Phase 1 includes, shown in green here. It's, it's a similar concept that we're doing in Closest Creek, which will will show you not only upsizing the storm sewer pipes for conveyance, but also adding in stormwater detention to try and reduce those peak flows. You know, at some point, you know, you can only make the sewer so big, so let's try and detain some water in 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 store it, as well as even promote some groundwater infiltration as well. And so that's where you see some of these, these kind of shapes here, where we're proposing, we've added in detention basins in the design. And Phase 1, what we talked about, and so let me go back to the screen here, where you see the two and the three. This is at Shawnee Avenue and Amherst Street. And we've been, you know, very fortunate to work with, you know, the the church. There we got the Highland Park Community Church and True Bible Baptist Church there. They've been great to work with. This is their church right here. And so they have two large parking lots. And and the mayor and Councilmember Westgard and I have had meetings with them, and they, working together with them, you know, there's, there's, there's not a lot of, you know, in these neighborhoods, they didn't have detention basins. There wasn't as much green space. So here we find some big space where they're working with them to to basically take up their parking lots and then put large chambers underneath the parking lots and then rebuild the parking lots. And then obviously, as another benefit, you know, fix the streets and and fill in the sidewalk gaps. So there's, there's no, there's missing sidewalk gaps. We see in pink, there's not sidewalks there today. So because we're ripping it all up with the large sewer work, we're going to put back the infrastructure, you know, the what, you know, the way we'd like it as well. So here's the concept. Here was the design. You can see here's their, they got two large parking lots. And and the city council authorized this project, and it's already, I mean, it's, it's, I'll be honest, it's, it's moving fast. I mean, this was, this picture was taken yesterday. They're unloading these big chambers off of trucks as, you know, you know, by the minutes here. And and so here's the chambers. Here's the, we talked again about normal gravel. Our stone has more fines to it. You can see this is kind of more of a porous gravel, and they're bottomless chambers to try and promote groundwater infiltration. So this is just one of the parking lots that that has the underground detention. You can see what's going to, you know, the underground detention being installed, and obviously, the new parking lot pavement will be on top of that. So again, it seems odd somewhat to people, well, why are you doing these detention basins and stuff upstream? It's the same thing as Closest Creek. Well, because that's given some immediate relief. So that way, the folks don't have to wait solely wait just for the large sewer to come up, provide some relief in flood mitigation, flooding mitigation and stormwater relief. And so they provide, you know, again, providing the storage. If the sewers get overwhelmed, the water can go back into these chambers. And here's another one. You know, I, if you go out there today, this is behind the the Iowa Steakhouse off of Euclid there. And this is Oak Park Avenue. If you go out there today, they've stripped off the topsoil, so they're working on this one as well. This is another basin that we have some, to do some green space to 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 provide some storage throughout the system. So again, very excited. This massive project is underway and, you know, that we're fixing a lot of infrastructure with this.
Linda, did you have a question?
I, I just wanted to do a shout out to, to Steve.
I, I just wanted to do a shout out to, to Steve and his entire group. I've been to the neighborhood meetings and I'll tell you, staff has really done a great job. With presenting the plan to the neighborhood and with their public meetings. So I sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Westergaard, and then thank you and, and the mayor. And I know you guys, both the mayor and Councilman Square have spent time sitting on, on, sitting down with folks on their, on, in meeting with them. And individually, and so that's, like I said, I, you know, very excited, especially with this first phase, the cooperative effort. That's underway with Shawnee, the detention bases at Shawnee and Amherst. I think that's win-win for, for everyone in the area. And we continue with, with more stormwater improvements, you, you, they. You know, we, we said, and there's no question in that, I mean, at a public meeting. We said we were gonna do the main artery of Closest Creek watershed. And so when I talk about the main artery, if you look in orange, two A and the red one A. The orange two B and shown in yellow and three, all the way up to, to be honest, the area of forty-seven and Holcomb Avenue. Shown in one B, that's what we said, our goal was to get done by, in five years. We said this back in twenty eighteen after the devastating flood event we had in our city. And so in five years, you want to get the main artery done. So one A shown in red and one B, these were big ones, are, are complete. Two A and two B are the ones that, that were, we've got out, out designed and ready to go. And those were bid yesterday, got great bids, like great bids and a contractor, an excavating contractor that do these projects. So let me cover those. There's the snapshot, again, we've got to get the, from basically from Thirty Street. All the way up through Long Franklin there and then up, up. To forty-seven and Holcomb, that's, we've got it two by twenty-three, that's what we said we would do. So we talked about.
Dave, Bill, Bill's got a quick question, I think.
Yep.
Steve, I, I, I just want to highlight what you have done over here in this neighborhood. People will walk by and stop and talk to me about the fantastic work that your team has put together getting this done. And I'm assuming it's still, is it Henshams and, and that does the work? I know they did it up here, are they gonna do two A and two B as well?
They, they, the two A and two B, the low bidder is R W Excavating, I think. You know, that, so that, that, that's, that's the apparent low bidder. S M Henshams, yeah, they did one A, which is, and one B, both shown in red. And they're actually over in Highland Park, they're the ones that were putting the, the underground chambers in.
Yeah, I, I saw that in the picture, their backhoe had that logo on it. So, but I'll tell you what, what you guys have done is nothing short of miraculous. So keep up the great work. We're gonna get Beaverdale out of the swamp one of these days.
Yep. Feeling better with all the, thank you, councilman, feeling better with, as we continue to make massive progress on this. You can see here's Macokada, this is, you can see them packing the large storm sewers across the street. Here's kind of the finished product, this is at Forty First and College.
Steve, Connie's, Connie's got her hand up.
Oh, oh, sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to comment on the fact that, you know, when you see these maps and you see the distance, you go. The amount we have pushed up to get done, and I think I asked in two thousand eighteen if we had all the money in the world, how fast could we get things done? And you still said it would be like a five year because of the amount of work, of the tear up, the, how you reroute everything. So again, to commend all of your staff for, when we said move it up, it's getting done. So I think to understand the complexity and the time it takes is important too.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, kudos to the, the city and the city, the mayor and council. And again, we talked about doing what we said we would do. Yeah, I'll admit, it, it, it's a daunting feat to do this big, these bigger projects that fast. You know, this, these were eight million dollar type projects. I mean, they're massive and they're impactful. And we, we told the neighborhood that it was gonna be rough during construction and we'll show, I'll show you some photos here that will back that up. So I appreciate the neighborhood's patience because it's, when you put a sewer the size of a, of a, of a room. Where the chambers are the size of, of people's, you know, rooms, it's, it's, it's impactful to say the least. And, and actually, let me go here. So, yeah, you know, we talked about impactful. This is the photo of, these are the chambers that were put, this is the intersection of Forty-seventh and Holcomb. You know, this area was, was devastated to say the least in two thousand eighteen. So, so, so here, these, these are twelve foot wide chambers that are underneath the street. The store stormwater, again, we don't have the luxury, we don't have the green space. You know, you know, where we can provide open detention basins that you can see. So, so this is what we had to come up with to, to provide relief. So again, not only putting the main large trunk sewer that comes up to convey the flows. We also want to, we wanted to incorporate some storage to reduce those peak flows. And the benefit of this, again, we go back to why would we do, do at the top of the, top of the stream first? One, this, this detention provides some relief right off the bat. Yes, we don't have, you know, we don't have the big sewer up there yet. But it provides a lot of storage for some of those more frequent events. So if the sewers get overwhelmed downstream, you know, this, this on top of the conveyance is, is a. Definitely a resilient design. So here's the chambers that are under the street. If you go out there today, here's what the, you know, the streets look like. So underneath this pavement is those big sewers that you see out there today, so. Again, when we tear up the roads, we get all, they get new streets and new, new sidewalks as well.
Bill, your hand up again?
It sure is, Mayor. I just want to highlight one more thing. I don't know, Steve, if you remember the, the initial meeting we had in July in Jenny Kleiss's yard. And it was very uncomfortable. We took a lot of heat. Mayor was there, Jonathan was there, I was there, Chris Coleman was there and Connie was there. It was not a pleasant sight. And if you wanted to say, we were the enemy in that meeting. Because of this hard work and, and the accelerated schedule, I think you've seen Jenny and along with Gloria Hoffman. Two of the biggest supporters of everything that we've done in this area. In fact, the mayor had his yard sign and Jenny's lawn during the last election cycle. It's just magnificent what you've gotten done. I just want to highlight it again. This has turned a lot of the neighbors around to seeing that the city of Des Moines does care about its neighborhood. And you did a great job, Steve.
Thank you, yep. The councilman's correct. We all had that meeting exactly right to the left of this picture. About twenty feet and I remember it very well, yep.
Why do I?
Connie's your hand up again?
So we continue.
No, I never took it down, sorry.
We, we continue forward and, and here's the next phase that, that the, the council will authorize an award. And it's, it's, it's on by Beaver Avenue. We're gonna be adding two large eighty-four inch culverts. Underneath Beaver Avenue and while we're at it, you know, the councilman and, and, and residents obviously. You know, had highlighted this, that Beaver Avenue itself also had some issues. And so we've added, ran some intakes to, to help Beaver itself as, as well. And then also running a large six foot sewer kind of across the long Thirty Fourth Street and over to, to improve that. Conveyance as well. And then also, right now, what, what's going on is there's an old. Culvert sewer that runs all along here. And so what we're doing is by putting in the new pipes, we're gonna kind of open it up here and utilize the ravine. As, as essentially storage space is per volume. So that's another perk there with that. That one's, again, great bids on that project, about a six million dollar. Yeah, if the bids came in comfortably under the estimate, we had a lot of contractors after it. So we got, I think it was a six million, eight million dollar estimate, the bids came in closer to six million, that's, that's awesome. And here's another piece of that. This is Forty First and College. Remember we, that was the picture I showed where we ended the Macokada sewer box? And so this is regrading the ravine area to be detention basins. Again, we talked about trying to work in, not just conveying the stormwater, but providing some storage to reduce those peak flows. More flood, more mitigation type work.
Steve, Bill's got his hand up again.
I hate to be the, Steve, I, I was on my walk, as a fact, it was yesterday, and one of the neighbors stopped me. And they were complaining about the flooding that takes place or the, actually the pooling that takes place on Allison. And I know Dave Camp said that we have the capability of getting that down, but you know, to me, just an innocent bystander. Allison sits a lot lower than, than Franklin and going down to the. Ravine down there behind Gloria's place. What, are we sure that we're gonna take care of that pooling on Allison with this job?
You know what, let, let me check and I'd have to check and see where that, where that falls. To be honest, that one could be in, in some future phases. So I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's supposed to be part of the, of these direct phases that we'll see in the next few years. It, it's planned, I think it's, 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 it's in the plan, it's just, there, there isn't quite the funding to get over to that, that section from what I recall. So, but it is.
That'd be great. Hey, I, I'd hate to see water continue to pool down there and people thinking that their, their tax money got wasted. So let's just to make sure that Allison gets cleared out of that.
Yep, yep, thank you, councilman. So here's our, our flood mitigation program, improving the resiliency of our, of our levee system downtown. And again, this is the project where the city partnered with the Dwight Waste River Reclamation Authority to, to secure. Over a hundred million dollars to help pay for improvements to the levee system as well as the interior drainage and pump stations. So the city's done a, a lot of work already on this. In fact, if you go out there today, you'll see the light blue Correll trucks working. Right now, they're, they're down south at the Red Bridge on Phase A. So Phase A is under construction and, and. Looking to be done late this year. Phase B, shown in blue here. This one, the design is substantially complete and property acquisition is well underway. And so we're, we're in track to bid this project later this year. Phase C, shown in red, in pink, pink. That one is ninety-five percent done with the design, is being coordinated with the Central Isle Water Trails Projects. Both the Phase C levee alterations and Central Isle Water Trails Project will be bid late this year. With the construction occurring in twenty-two and twenty-three, so we've been having to coordinate staging with, with that. And then the, the, the city council will be seeing soon agreements to start the design of, work, working our way downstream. Phases D, E, F, G, H there. And, and so this, the E F G H is the, is the, was known as the Southeast Des Moines Levee. That's the unit, the Army Corps. Let's throw some press, so here we go. This is the photos of the construction of Phase A. They have to compact and build the levee and lifts. Typically six inches, six, here in this case. And so just to kind of give folks a reference of what is, what's going on here. So here, if you can see in the bottom of the screen, the hundred-year model water elevation. Is just below the elevation of twenty-six. And you can see this line right here is kind of, the kind of jagged line, that's the existing levee surface. You can see the existing levees, you know, it's, it's, it's not a level service, it's a surface. And so what we're building is top here, filling in the gray, having to strip it, strip down. And then rebuild the levee back up into what's at, at the top of the gray. So the hundred-year water surface is at twenty-six. For FEMA accreditation, we need to be at twenty-nine, so three feet above. Except where bridges occur, then we need to be four feet above there, it's thirty. So FEMA accreditation needs to be at twenty-nine, we're sitting right about thirty-one. So yes, that's above and beyond. We, we, the city felt it was best to build in some assurance and resiliency. And what we're doing is we're designing to the Corps of Engineers new standard, the ninety, ninety percent assurance. So in downtown, it does provide a little bit more buffer. When you got all the bridges and stuff, the modeling becomes much more complex. So there is, there is some resiliency built in here, specifically downtown in our, our levees. So that's just hopefully paints the picture of what's going on here, where the levee, where the hundred-year flood event is modeled. Where the current levee is, where we need to be for FEMA accreditation and then where we're actually building. And again, we've made a lot of progress. I, I know some of our, our neighborhoods and councilmember Gatto have, have been heavily, you know, dealt with this one. It's, it's been impactful, there's no question, putting in large sewers and the large pump station. This is Southeast Fourth and Van Buren. And so here's, here's the completed pump station. That, that's out there, a very large pump station to say the least. I know years ago that, that area struggled with flooding and the city has put in the, the Jackson Basin and the pump station over there. And then this one now as well, raising it above, the outlet pipes above. The discharge pipe from the pump station above the level protection. And continuing down here, here's Southeast Ninth Street. So Southeast Ninth Street, we proposed a new pump station that needed to be replaced. We needed to get the outlet pipes above the level protection so we could pump the water. So when the river's up, we need to be able to pump the water over the levee. And so, so when we got into the design of the new pump station, we found that it would, the water was having a difficult time getting to the pump station. And that actually the area, there's some residential newer developments down here at Southeast Eleventh and Mari. That were having flooding issues. And so, and, and so what we built in was, again, we go back to doing some pipe improvements. But also adding it to detention basin to provide some relief to store the water. So instead of the water just coming down the pipes and all surging down here, and then when the pipes get overwhelmed, it, it comes out the intakes and floods. We've got kind of some relief and storage here, so. And so let me show some pictures of that. Here's the bottom of the wet well, you can see these are big, big pump stations, the wet wells where all the water comes in. And so that, that's the bottom of the wet well, and there's the pump, the new pump station today. And so again, very excited, I know our, our Pollock Works team, who's, who's been, that they're our partners. They, they've been in, in the weeds and all this and helped us develop all these designs. And Jack, Jonathan Gano and Adam Smith at Christensen and Patrick Bean and Steve Johnson. They've all been involved with all these designs and I know they're happy. Before, to be honest, the old pump station, there was no control building. So, so we had our folks out there trying to operate pumps on controls outside. And obviously, when they're operating them, it's usually not good weather conditions. So we're very excited for that with the generator, new generators. So there's the new pump station at Southeast Ninth. And then we talked again about the detention concept. So instead of the water just coming down the pipe straight there, let's provide some, we took kind of this area here. This is Cohen Park, there's a fountain here that, that, that runs, it kind of need to see there, it runs in the, runs non-stop. In Cohen Park, if you go out there, this was the designer, Ben Page and, and Jenny Richmond and Colby Fangman and folks. Helped work with us on, you know, since we're putting this stormwater basin, let's try, let's kind of enhance it as the stormwater feature with a park. So they designed a trail around it, a walking trail to expand the park. And then we graded the pad here for future expansion of the park, as, as funding comes available. And so this is where it is today. So the basin's been graded and built. There's, we still got some of the, the tree plantings, but at least the basin's been graded, built. And then there's some of the seeding that's been put in there. So very excited to have this, this in place for, especially for our neighborhood to the south to provide some relief there. And so another initiative, the Neighborhood Sidewalk Initiative, this is a big one. The city is, 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 the city, the mayor and city council are, are, have, have put out initiative to improve walkability all over our city. Starting with the focus on, on school routes, connection to bus stops and nodes. And so that's where the focus has been. And so we've completed a couple of projects already. This initiative just started, you know, really in twenty, middle of twenty nineteen. And since in two years, twelve and a half miles of sidewalks underway. Very excited about some of these, you know, all these. But you can see here the picture on the right, this is along Euclid, this is. This is, this is one that leads, leads to a school that's a Hoyt and Brubaker. So, and I see Councilman.
Josh?
Sure, I, I just wanted to ask, just in context, I didn't want to interrupt you talking about this particular piece, but what, I mean, Move DSM identifies, I believe, 180 miles of Priority One sidewalk. So at the pace we're going, how long is it going to take us? I mean, that, that's somewhere between 20 and 30 years, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, that's correct. I mean, that's, we knew this would be a long, long haul. I mean, there, there's a, in some cases, you can see, not so much these two areas, but there's some of these sidewalks that we deal with. And there's a reason they were, probably weren't put in, they're challenging to put in, to say the least, with retaining walls and grade topography issues and right-of-way issues. And so, I mean, you're right, that, that is, that is probably the timeline, obviously, you know, based on what we'd be looking at. And it, it's not going to get any easier with some of these, these sidewalks that we're, we're looking at here.
That, it, well, would it be possible if we devoted additional funding to, to get this done quicker? I mean, could we, could we cut that time in half?
Well, it's, you know, in terms of the progress, I, I mean, certainly additional funding would help. There's also a capacity issue of how many sidewalks could be built, we, and designed. As you know, would these require a lot of coordination with the residents and, and right-of-way acquisition? So I mean, there, there could be some more done. I would, I would say double would probably be, would be pushing it. We, we do incorporate sidewalks as part of our road projects. You know, we, we see, we saw Southeast Fifth, we saw South Union, we've seen Fluor Drive, East Douglas Avenue addressing a big need there as well, that's starting up here. And so we, we do, we incorporate those, we, we fix them as we go, but we saw the stormwater projects that are doing some. So that helps as well. So we always address them when we're, we're doing street work in the area. But I think that's something we'd have to look at when we're talking just standard, you know, new sidewalks. These are, I'll fully admit, to be honest, these are, and I said this when I, when I actually interviewed five, five and a half years ago, to come here, the, when Larry Holst asked me, what's the toughest projects, these have always been, and I'm not trying to, the, I would say, but these, these are some of the toughest projects you do when you get in people's yards and you're dealing with right-of-way. They're, they're challenging projects, to say the least, and some of the ones that we've talked about coming up. I know Councilman Grace talked about 30th Street up by, south of Douglas, Councilmember Bosens talked about 33rd, Councilman Gatto's talked about Army Post Road, I mean, those, those are definite needs, and, but they're challenging projects. So I'm hesitant to, to shoot the shirt, you know, could it, can it be done, but I think that would be, that would probably be pushing, pushing it, but we could, I could talk it over with the city manager's office and see what funding allows.
Yeah, well, because after the Priority One, we, we've got another, I mean, I think Move DSM identified over 600 miles of sidewalk gap. So, so, you know, the priority piece, taking us three decades, would, I, I mean, that essentially means, unless there's a reconstruction, which it, it's good that we've made that our policy to address complete streets anytime we're, we're in the roadway, you know, doing the, any sort of redesign or reconstruction. But this is a pretty important piece to creating an accessible community, and getting it done quicker, I think, is really important. So I think we're making good progress. I, I love this program, I think it's, I think it's good. I just want to see more of it, and I want to see it done faster.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, thank you. Okay. So yeah, like I said, the past two years, 12 and a half miles done, that's a huge, you know, and I appreciate that, Councilman, that I agree, that is a huge effort, huge accomplishment. I think the, these, there's been some critical routes that have been done in the past couple of years as well. So I think they're hopefully enjoying that. I know we're looking at the one on the right, I mean, obviously this, I live over here on the east side and pick this street every single day, and definitely lots of people using these new sidewalks, going back and forth connecting the commercial area to, to the neighborhood and the bus stops.
Steve?
Yep.
Carl has a question, he hasn't been able to raise his hand for some reason.
Thank you, Mayor County. Steve, when we get some of the storm and sanitary sewer projects out of the way, would that give us the ability to, to increase the miles of sidewalk gaps that we try to complete?
Councilman, this is Scott, that's, those are actually different funding sources. So that would not give us additional capacity for sidewalks? Yep, yeah.
I, I just, a quick follow-up, I, I mean, I think what Carl was getting at is there's the design capacity, and then there's the funding capacity. And maybe he was getting at the design capacity and addressing that piece of the barrier if, if you freed up staff who are no longer working on, on sewer projects and the right-of-way issues that are involved there, would that free up the ability to do more work on the sidewalks, assuming funding allowed it?
Yeah, I mean, the, these, yeah, there's, that's a good question, and, and there's no question, you know, that, those, the sewer separations, and, and then some of these massive stormwater projects are, are their major initiatives. And so, yeah, that would probably help from a staffing standpoint. I think we'd have to see, I think the next hurdle would be the funding aspect is to, to tackle. And like I said, the sewer separations, we're targeting that end of '23, that kind of also falls in line with the, the main artery, Closest Creek. I'm not sure that, I know that our Public Works Department's leading kind of the stormwater master plan effort, that the stormwater, I, I think there, there's probably a continuum, you know, that that's not going to let up. We've had flooding issues all over town, so I see that probably coming, but the sewer separations will be one that would come off the plate. Yep. And then also just for the public's standpoint, as Scott alluded to, when we talk about different funding, the sewer separations where the city is working with the state, the finance using a state revolving loan. It's a, it's a huge benefit of tool, and I'm glad the city's in our Public Works Department's using to, one, it's really, really low interest rate financing to accomplish projects. And then off of that, there's a program for, that allows for a portion, portion of the interest to actually, instead of just going to interest, it's used towards stormwater projects. So that's the state revolving program, state revolving loan program that the city's using for the sewer separation projects. And then our, the stormwater fees that all our residents, including myself, we all pay, that's what's using to fund the, the products that you see, these storm, our big stormwater projects. So local auction, sales and service tax, road rehabilitation, you know, I, we all, I know our mayor and council, obviously all were involved with our residents in the talks about how to fix our streets, fix our streets, and this one, again, I'm excited about, you know, the, very proud, the city, it, you know, approved the local auction, sales and service tax. And so this is what we, I, to be honest, I just changed the slide to say, this is what we were going to do, and now I changed it to this is what we did. So this was an easy slide to update and a good one to update. We, we knocked out last year, just in the, you know, since we got the, the local auction sales. So the 17-lane miles of neighborhood streets, 11-lane miles of streets that everyone travels every day, Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, Hubble Avenue, Easton Boulevard, Hartford Avenue, those were all some of the biggest streets that people saw under construction last year. And then here's Easton Boulevard, I know this may just, I, I'll be honest, I was proud to take a call from a, a person who was upset because they had to drive slower down Easton Boulevard, and I said, you know, that, that's, that's our, that's our goal. This does, while it is a major road that people take, re, re-striping it to narrow up the lanes and define the lanes more. Before, the street was a two-lane road with just a center line, so I think motorists kind of had trouble. Is there, when they turn left, do they kind of pull over and can cars pass? And so there was a history of some sideswipes there for crashes. And so we restriped and reconfigured this, as well as adding the pedestrian crossing, and kind of see the pedestrian crossing in the distance there, connecting the two parts. And so this was a project that was done with local auction and sale of service tax, as well as the neighborhood streets that you see. So what's, so what's next? What will we be seeing? You know, the, the local auction sale service tax did, it did take a dip, it's a couple million less, but we still are, we still are targeting some, some great products here, the Keel Way, Keel Saco Way Rehabilitation from Ninth to Nineteenth. I think a lot of folks have, are, I'll be happy to see that one fixed. I was on it yesterday, and it's, it's a need, to say the least. And Evergreen Avenue Rehabilitation from Marion Street to East 30th Court, fixing that street up. And then we've got some more miles of paving in our residential neighborhoods. And then, as well as a citywide Portland cement concrete patch improvement that addresses a lot of areas all throughout the, the city as well. So again, continuing with the, I mean, very proud that our city, you know, this, we continue to do what we say we would do. And so this, this, I hope, shows that. Oh, and we talk about upcoming bid schedule, you know, this in green right here, a lot of these, the, the council and the public have seen on our public meetings. Some of these come through, talk about East Douglas Avenue, we talk about the Hamilton Drain that's under construction. So these are ones that people recently saw in the past few months. And then here's what's upcoming. Again, we talked about Keel Saco Way Rehabilitation, we talked about the Closest Creek Phase 2A and 2B, Awesome Park Project, McCray Park Improvements Phase 3, that'll be coming into the, for a hearing soon. And so here's, this again, West Ringersall Phase 2. So again, a lot of these are part of the initiatives and part of the planning efforts that we've done. But here's kind of the list of the upcoming bids. So with that, that, that concludes my presentation. As the city engineer and as a resident of Des Moines, again, I'd rather reiterate as, as, as some of our council members have said, I mean, I, I, I'm, it's, it's exciting to see these plans executed. It's exciting to see the city do what it said it would do, and, and with terms of the stormwater initiatives, the sidewalk initiatives, and the local auction, sales and service taxes, I'd like to see that stuff in action. And we know there's a lot of construction going on, we know it's impactful, to say the least. We, we know Fluor Drive, I mean, it's, it's, you will see that one again. I'll be honest, it would be easier for our, our mayor and council, our city manager's office, for Jonathan Gano, for me, if we just put a Band-Aid over Fluor Drive and, and just resurfaced it. But that's not what needs to happen there. That would just make it look good for a few years, and then we'd be back there again. So doing the right, applying the right rehabilitation strategy, full reconstruction there, new pavement, that's what's needed for the long haul. And so we know it's impactful, so we appreciate our pet, our, our residents, visitors and businesses as we work through all these initiatives. But we hope that, we hope the rewards are worth it on the end, so with that, I'll.
Steve, Josh has his hand up.
Yep, okay.
I, I was hoping, particularly given our conversation on Monday, and it sounded like interest from Councilmember Gatto and, and others about pieces of Connect Downtown, and maybe a cup, figuring out a couple of, couple additional streetlight and maybe striping solutions. I, I was wondering if that's possible and something that we could do with a quick and short turnaround. And wanted to, wanted to get your thoughts on that, and maybe, maybe that's, I, I know John's looking at a number of, a, a number of small solutions down there, engineering solutions, but wanted to get your thoughts on that, because that would be a little bit bigger and speeding up a piece of that.
Yep, thank you, Councilman. So a couple things, just, so in terms of Connect Downtown, the things that are in general, and I'll get to the, the, the loop scooping thing in a bit here, but that can, in terms of Connect Downtown, the things that are underway or in progress. Obviously, we talked about the Keel Way, as part of the Keel Way roadway project that's coming through, there'll be a pedestrian crossing improvement there. There's a downtown pump, a bump-out project where we improve pedestrian crossings, like in areas like Mulberry Street, 12th Street, there'll be a complete streets project to, to be, to, to actually, to add bike lanes, reconfigure the street a little bit to improve one home traffic and improve pedestrian crossings and bike connectivity as well. And then we've talked about, we've had public meetings in the past about the work that's going to happen on the western side, Eighteenth Locust and Grand, all that reconfiguration to start the one-way to two-way conversion. And then the project that's also, we're working with the city manager's office to move forward, is Fifth Avenue two-way conversion, along with Grand Avenue, east of Fifth Avenue as well. So those are the projects for the public standpoint that are in the works to connect downtown. And, and so in terms of the, the matters to try and accelerate at least pieces of it, or, or, you know, that's something that we'll have to look into, how we do with just striping on Grand Avenue and Locust to try and calm the traffic sooner than waiting for the big, the bigger projects to come. So that's something we're going to have to, to work through if there's any, is there kind of an interim measure in terms of just using patio markings and maybe some signal work?
Right, and it costs, remind me what it costs for, for a, a new traffic signal? So it's, is it around like a quarter million dollars to, to get, to get the signal facing the other direction when it's an intersection where it's just one way right now?
It, it generally, quarter million is, is, is correct, that's generally about the number. It can obviously be much higher if there's ADA ramps and a lot of reconfiguration with right-of-way. I, to be honest, yeah, probably quarter million is the general number we use. I would probably say 300,000 downtown because of the, the tight space and the types of foundations we have to use in the ADA ramp. So probably 300 would be more closer downtown, but a quarter million is generally what we use across the city.
Well, and, and we're getting to Fifteenth Street as part of that, that Eighteenth Street project, that'll be two-way. And then, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty long stretch from Fifteenth to, is it, is it Thirteenth? Is where the, the next stop is, and then there's another at 12. But I mean, if you only needed one additional, one additional stoplight to really impact a, a critical piece of that area of the loop, would that be something that we might be able to, to just add? And that's going to disrupt the whole Sculpture Park piece of the loop if you turn that stretch into two-way, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can look at, you know, extending that, you know, trying to break off more pieces of this.
Okay. Well, we, we can, we can talk separately about, about some of this too, but I, I wanted to raise it here, particularly since Councilmember Gatto was publicly supportive of exploring solutions like that.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, Josh brings up a great point, and, you know, if we're looking at one or even two lights to kind of change the flow of the traffic, I think that that would be worthwhile looking at. I think that that would be a, a better fix than some of the no parking restrictions that we're looking at. Also, maybe the lanes, seeing what we need to do with the lanes in, in certain areas, what we can. I know we can't do the whole thing, I know the price tag's too expensive, but if you can disrupt the flow a little bit, even in the middle, that's going to change the whole configuration of what people have done for years. And if, if that's what we want to do, I think that's going to be the fix.
Okay, thank you.
Connie?
Um, I think that, you know, I know that you had reached out before when we were talking the initial Connect Downtown. And I think we should reach out again to the partnership and the uh, um, operation downtown and see how we can get some help to speed some of that up. If it is a few right now to help rearrange things, uh, I think we should be looking at that.
Okay. All right.
All right, I think, thank you, uh, Steve, for your presentation. I think it really uh, gives us a sense of all the work that's taking place in and around Des Moines and uh, some of the other tougher situations that we have to work with and through, including sidewalks. Um, I think we need to um, continue to look at that and certainly that whole um, Connect Downtown issue and, and um, some of the problems that we have, we've got to find solutions sooner rather than later. But thank you so much, uh, um, I think it's helped us all to see the great progress that you guys have been making um, all around the city.
Thank you.
Scott, let's kick it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, uh, the support that council shows for our bread and butter infrastructure. It's so important that we get caught up on generationally, uh, because a lot of that has been uh, challenged and, and not receiving the amount of funding and attention that it has needed. So the last six, seven years in particular have been incredibly uh, progressive in that nature. So thank you again. So we do have, uh, the next topic is a little bit of training. Uh, those of you that have been on the council for a little while are, will recognize some of this uh, topic. But it is, uh, as you'll hear, uh, part of the requirement as the city issues debt each year uh, that we do uh, stay uh, current with, with the regulations. So we have asked Eric Bowler from Allers, who is our bond counsel, to uh, speak to you about uh, what some of those standards are and any new changes that we need to be aware of. Eric, thank you for joining us this morning.
Absolutely, good morning. I'm very pleased to be with you. I'm going to ju- just turn my camera on just for a little bit in hopes that uh, maybe when we're actually able to be back together in person, that you can uh, face and name recognition. Uh, I've had an opportunity to meet and work with some of you through the WRA and, and other projects for, for the others. I look forward to uh, when we can be back in person. Uh, Zoom has most certainly been a blessing in uh, this last year. Um, and I will share my screen here shortly to get the slides. I believe you guys have the note slide deck and some other materials. Um, but I see that you guys are all very, very good about with raising your hands and all that type of stuff. Um, when I share my screen, sometimes I don't, uh, sometimes the hand raised slides pass me. And so I just want to invite you guys, please just jump right in. If there are things that you want to talk about or there are questions you have, I most certainly have time at the end. But uh, these types of interactions go better. Um, left amount of devices, I can talk and talk and talk, but uh, please don't hesitate to, to jump right in. Um, I'm going to go ahead and just share my screen now, bear with me for a second. Okay, um, so I've been asked to talk about bond disclosure as Scott had indicated. Um, I thought it might be helpful. First of all, I want to make sure that transition, you guys saw the second slide now, does it say roadmap? Yes. Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, I thought it would be helpful, just a, a brief outline uh, of what we're going to talk about today to give you guys a heads up. Um, disclosure really is the, the city's interaction with the market, some of which is formal and required, some of which is evolving into a, a more informal. Uh, and there will be some takeaways associated with that for you. Um, all of it is subject to federal securities laws. And so I will most certainly touch on what's required. Um, and for specifically for the council, I want to highlight for you all of the processes, procedures and policies that you have in place that should give you some great comfort with regard to the process. Um, and underlying process diligence and really vetting of the information um, that's both presented to you and then also ultimately presented to the market. Um, I'll also highlight some of the enforcement actions of the SEC, uh, and then with some takeaways. But all of this is important for a number of reasons, but the most important is like, is likely your cost of capital. Um, which is incredible, as we've seen in the latest bond sales. Uh, these are your latest twenty twenty-one A and twenty twenty-one B closed a month ago. Um, and as you see, S and P, this is from your rating, uh, double A plus and for both of those, and then reaffirmed for just long-term rating of your general obligation debt. And as we know, general obligation debt is that secured by a property tax. Um, within the report, uh, the rating agent, S and P, it basically highlighted the strong fundamentals that you have with regard to your financials, strong management, strong policies, certainly your interaction with the marketplace. I don't know what happened there, uh, so, um, plays into the uh, the, the process and their analysis. But at the end of the day, when you take your debt to market, then we see returns like this. Look, I've been doing this twenty years, um, thirty-five million dollars and all in cost under a, under one percent for, for twelve years. Incredible, here's forty-four million, as you guys are aware, I'm just regre- you guys have seen this already, but this was a taxable issue and just above one percent. Just incredible cost of capital. And um, now, I will say that the rating agency has noted everyone's on watch to see how things uh, will go with regard to the pandemic and COVID. But vis a vis your peers, given this rating, you are at the very top of um, top of the scale there. So we want to keep doing that. At the end of the day, I mean, we might look at this and say, well, this is just uh, city's just borrowing money. Um, and so why is that any different for, than uh, why, why do we have to jump through any extra hoops? Well, what I want to highlight for you is there's a difference between a loan, which is directly to a, to the bank. Uh, the bank may very well have specific terms and protections, but they hold that loan for the life of the debt and you have a one-on-one relationship. Contrast that with a bond that is sold to investors and we could have there in five thousand dollar blocks and you could have hundreds, if not thousands of different invest, investors out there. Um, and frankly, when we take it to the market to sell, then you get the benefit of the competition. And I can uh, assure you that I've not seen bank loans with the rates anywhere comparable to the likes that you've seen in the competitive market. Now, when we get investors involved, then we fall into the bucket of municipal securities, offering municipal securities subject to the SEC. And uh, you know, the SEC, federal government, they're, they're tasked with protecting those investors. Um, their securities laws are designed specifically for that transparency, uh, timely and, and adequate information to the investors. And frankly, break it down into uh, a couple of different types of available information. The primary offering, when we're first seeking the underwriter to purchase our debt, who will then reoffer it. Uh, that's, takes the form of an official statement. Hopefully, that's a familiar term to you and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But also secondary disclosure, the continuing disclosure certificate is a contract to provide annual updates of relevant information uh, specific to, to the debt itself. Uh, and those annual updates keep the market informed. The bottom line is, the SEC views the municipal market as, or as equivalent to, you know, public, privately traded public companies, publicly traded private companies, sorry, I said that backwards. Um, you know, in the stock market, they very much would like to administer us like the stock market, but that's not exactly how it has played out. The Securities Act of thirty-three and the Securities Exchange Act of thirty-four has a uh, separate category. So we fall into state and local issuers. And unlike public companies, um, or publicly traded companies who have quarterly filings and very, very detailed SEC-reviewed offering documents, uh, the immunity market is subject to anti-fraud provisions and requires full disclosure. The specific rule uh, that it applies here is SEC Rule Ten B Five. And when it comes to the sale of our municipal securities, um, then it requires that our disclosure not contain, highlighted there, misstatements of material fact or any mo- material omissions. Um, and so material in this context is what would a reasonable investor want? Would that information uh, influence their decision? Uh, and, and, and that's really the crux of it. It will be analyzed on an issuer-by-issuer basis and the SEC looks specifically to issuers to make that analysis. They have not delved into formal guidance on what is material. Uh, and that has been a source of frustration for frankly, the entire market because they hold us accountable on materiality, but don't want to tell us what necessarily that means. Oftentimes, we get stuck a little bit in, well, when we're preparing information, we might look at it and say, well, what would a reasonable peer city of ours, is it reasonable for them? Would that be important to us, to another city? But that's not the standard. It's what is important to the reasonable investor. Um, and so when we use that, uh, view the world with that lens, um, they can help us, help guide, uh, guide us. The second rule that is uh, integral to your offerings is SEC Rule Fifteen C Two Twelve. This actually isn't directly applicable to issuers. It gets to us through the underwriters. The SEC can't regulate issuers per se, so they backdoor it through, through the underwriters. And so what happens is, underwriters cannot bid on a municipal security or purchase a municipal security unless they've received an official statement, which we just talked about, the primary uh, offering document and the primary disclosure, uh, which basically tells the story of the city, tells the story of the financing, um, security and some of the other financial and operating data included therein. And they cannot purchase any of the municipal securities unless the issuer agrees to enter into this contract, the continuing disclosure certificate for uh, annual updates of, of relevant information. So this is just a snapshot of the cover page of your twenty twenty-one uh, official statement. Um, it can take the, it, it can ultimately result be eighty to two hundred pages long and much comes down to what all are we, what are we doing? Um, the core of the OS relates to a, a description of the bonds, uh, the security, the tax status, whether it's tax exempt. Uh, all of that data generally comes from bond counsel. Um, there is a description of financial data and operating data relevant to the security. So again, much of your debt is general obligation debt secured by the property tax. And so you'll see tables like uh, property valuations uh, in, and, and comparing year to year, uh, economic growth. Um, and, and PFM and the, and your financial uh, department, finance department are integral in, in prepar- preparing all of that type of data. Uh, big picture, uh, the legal department and, and staff address, really rounding out the story of, of the city. Um, and, and as we'll touch on here in a little bit, you have policies and a number of different departments and groups and frankly, a core um, disclosure team that is looking into vetting all of that information. So as for the council, as the elected officials and really the mouthpiece or who the public and investors will look to for information, you can take comfort in the data that is incorporated into these types of documents. Meaning that when you get this eighty to two hundred page document, uh, your role isn't to go in and vet a particular table. Uh, your role is to, though we have many touches on this document, there are certain things that you as the leaders and uh, mouthpiece of the city, there are things that you may be aware of that your team is not. And, and I call this kind of the, the coffee shop effect. And granted, right now, uh, probably not as much frequenting of coffee shops um, as we would have in the past. But the notion is, as elected officials, your citizens are comfortable with you. They'll go to you, they come and share information with you. And when it comes to actual just citizens, taxpayers, et cetera, oftentimes, I assume what they may approach you with are localized personalized concerns, neighborhood issues, uh, services provided, et cetera. Um, but something may come to your attention that there is an outlying issue uh, that needs to be addressed that could have a financial impact, uh, significant financial impact on the city. Where it's more likely to trigger is in regard to a large industry, a large uh, employer within the city. I suspect that you're also contacted frequently on the front end uh, or at least given an indication that either we have a new company that wants to come in and is likely looking for some type of incentives uh, or that one may be looking to relocate a- and leave and might be looking for, well, what can you do to help me? What I would urge you to do is to keep your disclosure team advised of situations that you feel might cause issues. I mean, that might be a fight, like I said, a financial issue. The worst thing that we can do is have an OS, an official statement hit the street, request bidders and underwriters to invest in us. And then two weeks after the fact, a major uh, news story is released that, well, we're, we're going to lose this manufacturing plant that employ, or our primary employer within, within our community. The city of Des Moines is large enough that I'm not sure there's a single employer, a single industry or the loss of such that would be, that would move the needle uh, materially. But we most certainly don't want to lose them. Um, and frankly, we want to grow. And so, and you've been doing a great job there. Uh, but the legal department, economic development, the finance department, um, PFM, bond counsel, there are things that we're just not privy to. Uh, and it may very well be that uh, it's, it's too private, it's not ready for public disclosure. Uh, and you might not be able to tell the legal department, okay, well, this is who contacted us, but we have an issue, you know, and they may be leaving. Um, but we might, these, this is the, the scope of the type of loss that we might entail. Um, and at least it puts it on the radar to be analyzed as to whether or not, well, is that material? Either if we can't include any information in an official statement, for example, then we might have to slow things down a little bit until such time as that's resolved or we determine it's not material. Um, or if there's something that we can disclose, um, or we determine it's not material. So it's just important that we don't have any surprises after the fact, knowing full well that the SEC's lens in looking through all this is to uh, protect the investors. And so they don't want any surprises that we knew about before um, we asked for bids and investment uh, to come out after the fact. And when we get into the enforcement actions, you'll see some of the corollaries there. And when we get into the enforcement actions, you'll see some of the corollaries there. Once we sold the debt, then we have the uh continuing disclosure certificate. Again, that was a contract with the underwriter basically or effectively the market to provide annual updates. Um it's your audit, timely filing of your audit, relevant financial and operating data. Like I said, with regard to a general obligation, it's going to be tax evaluations, uh property valuations, tax collections, amount of debt uh and the like. It also includes uh until twenty nineteen, there were fourteen events that if they occurred, uh then we needed to post notice within ten business days of their occurrence. And they were all bond and and issue specific. So they were early redemptions. So if we were going to call bonds early, we need to let the the market know. Um if there was a default, then we uh uh in payment in some fashion, then we had to let them know. Those obviously are very, very rare. Uh change of paying agent, um if there was some sort of substitution of security, sometimes you have letters of credit or uh insurance, your rating, if your rating changes, all of those against bonds and and issue specific. In twenty nineteen, uh the SEC changed and added two new events, both tied to other financial obligations. Uh and so it has taken the course, obviously, if you went and got a bank loan, uh that did not go through the market, that was a very common and and frequent sort of burr under the saddle of the SEC and investors. They wouldn't know that you incurred additional debt until your audit came out, you know, a year, year plus later. They're saying, no, if you do that, we want to see a more timely uh notification of the market that additional debt's been incurred. The more frequent uh trigger for you and many communities is is likely been in the in the context of development agreements and your economic development activities. Uh obviously, those development agreements obligate you uh upon the occurrence and performance of certain things by the developer to provide incentives in the financial form. And so that has been uh the most frequent, I believe, uh posting for you and and your peers. Um when I say posting, I I I'm relating to what is affectionately known as Emma, uh electronic municipal market access. It's a singular, sole focused website created by the MSRB, uh municipal securities rulemaking board. Um basically a one stop shop of information relative to muni, muni debt and specific to to issuers. And um this, for example, is just a snapshot of, as you can see, event based disclosures specific to you. Um I I don't know if you, if the text is small, I apologize for that. But for example, here are two uh bond calls. A notice of redemptions for thirteen A and thirteen B, which were the subject of the twenty twenty one A bond deal that just closed a month ago. And so we've notified the public uh and investors that thirteen A and thirteen B will be paid off here before their their maturities. We did that obviously for savings and that's the great sale that you had. As you can see hereafter, then we have just a number of other uh development agreements and and the like, all tied out to financial obligations, which are the 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 additional um events added in twenty nineteen. Um I add this. I add this table simply flow chart, I guess they call it, simply to say, this is our federal government and the SEC's attempt at at simplifying the process associated with um putting stuff up onto Emma and the decision matrix associated with um your continuing ongoing disclosure requirements, both from a preliminary aspect on the the OS and then continuing disclosure uh under the cut uh or I'm sorry, secondary and additional annual disclosure under a continued disclosure certificate. I highlight that because your staff and your team do an incredible job. And much of that can be rooted in uh this policy. Last amended, uh the city has adopted this last amended in twenty nineteen to correlate to those new uh updates in the rule. Um but within this, it appoints your finance director Nick Schall as the uh disclosure coordinator. It outlines a process and and a disclosure team identifies disclosure team to vet the information that we've already discussed in that OS uh in any annual filings um and all of the all of the like there. Um. This is the basis. The SEC has said uh that frankly, written um written policies are preferred. They're not required, but they're most certainly preferred by the SEC for a number of reasons. Number one, it serves as a roadmap and a really should be a living document. Um and I just want to assure you as to how well your team is is using this. Um they do a great job. And furthermore, it's beneficial in the context of a transition. So teams will ultimately change over time. And if the new subsequent heir apparent or heir to a particular position and um on the disclosure team came in new and fresh, uh trying to get up to speed could be a a tall task. Uh this gives at least a a starting point and a checklist of of things to go through to make sure that you're unlikely to miss miss a filing or or miss keeping uh keeping up on the data relevant and for that transparency that the SEC so uh seeks for investors. Um. Any questions at this point? I'm going to shift into enforcement. Okay.
Anybody have anything?
All right, perfect. Well, let me um a a little history may be helpful here. Um in, again, keep in mind, the SEC wants to view municipal securities like stocks, uh the stock market and and the available information there. We are different, uh but that again was a little bit of a burr in their saddle. And in twenty twelve, they, SEC came out with a report that basically said, muni, you're you're not keeping up. Um either you're the timeliness of your audit, you're getting an audit done, but then not posting it for well after the fact. You're not filing your annual updates on other table data or it's just not. Um it hasn't been updated appropriately. And they kind of floated out there trying to um not shame us into better action, but uh just sort of highlighting, we could do better as as a market segment. They didn't get the traction that they'd hoped for. And in twenty fourteen, they came out with MCDC initiative, uh maybe familiar to some of you just as far as it was a hot topic at the time. And MCDC stands for Municipal Continuing Disclosure Cooperation Initiative. And what they they focused on one particular section of the official statement, the continuing disclosure history uh and said, we feel like in reviewing this, there has been an abundance of disregard for actual reporting and inaccurate reporting of actual history, historical compliance. Uh and they offered issuers and underwriters the opportunity to basically come forward, fall on their sword and say, well, maybe we didn't fully accurately uh describe things, but it was it was not out, you know, it it wasn't intentional. Um and they offered settlements for the underwriters. Uh they settlements came with a fine upwards of half a million dollars. And there were uh virtually every underwriter that was active in the muni space had entered into a settlement and 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 paid a fine. There were seventy two ultimate uh underwriter settlements. And so then in about twenty sixteen, the issuer side, the SEC got around to the issuer side, also entered into settlements, and ironically, exactly seventy two uh with a cross section of issuers a- across the country. So it's cities, counties, schools, colleges, water districts, utilities, um special, special interest districts, et cetera. And for the the issuers, it was more intended, well, the settlements were simply a cease and desist to say, we don't admit anything, uh but we will do better. Uh and uh and and we will enter into, you know, have written policies a- and the like. After M- after MCDC in twenty sixteen and beyond, I think the SEC did get the traction and that they wanted. We've seen a tremendous uh evolution in how uh issuers across the board have uh adjusted their reporting, their tracking, um and frankly, just their disclosure in general. Uh and so that that's been a a good thing, uh because more information isn't ever really a a bad thing. Um there are have been enforcement actions. The web link above there is the SEC's reporting. They keep a running tally uh of of enforcement actions. This is a snapshot of enforcement actions from uh twenty nineteen and beyond. The key that I want, and I will talk about some specific ones, but I but I wanted to point out to you is that, you know, really, no one's exempt. The SEC, as we go just down the list, just go one, two, three, four. First one, KPMG auditors, uh they were enforcement action against them for improper audits and and improper conduct. Midst first midstate Inc. uh underwriter issue. Uh Jeffries Registered Representative, uh municipal advisor, financial advisor. Uh and here is charter school operator and former president uh fraudulent bond offerings. And you'll note that the key there is so when we talk about the other players, we have, you know, auditor improper professional conduct, uh the underwriter unfair conduct, Jeffries improper retail orders, that was the um that's an underwriter and and municipal advisor. Uh and then the school operative fraudulent uh bond offerings. I'm just drawing attention to the fact that recall the rule that we talked about uh that for state and local governments, it's an anti-fraud provision. The other actors who are regulated by the SEC have different rules. Um and frankly, when we go down here like UBS, again, another underwriter uh pays ten million for violating rules with regard to their retail investors. Those enormous sized fines uh and penalties are generally reserved for the participants who financially benefited from their in improper ac- actions. Public bodies and and issuers uh don't financially benefit uh from their action generally. Uh and often it's just a misstep. Um. And so they're 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 much smaller fines, uh if fines at all, and usually just a bar uh and preclusion from participating in any future or a period of time, future securities offerings. Um but in any event, so here are a number of historical and key issuer actions that I want to summarize for you in really there are two takeaways. I mean, it's use common sense when we when we highlight these, uh I think you'll see what I mean there. And and basically just do the right thing. Um and you have been, and that's the beauty of your process and your uh structure and the policies and whatnot. But in my twenty years of doing this work uh in Iowa, and I don't know whether it's the purported Iowa nice or uh just the fact that we do the right thing generally and and kind of universally within the state, I've not seen this, the the egregious behaviors that I'm about to summarize for you. But I think it's important to note the type of things that are out there um and and wa- and and keep a watchful eye. Um and so the state of Illinois, for example, I mean, their pension was structurally inept uh and unable to uh monetize and and frankly capitalize and keep up with the the growth. And they hid that in offerings. It was a time bomb waiting to happen, um and they knew it. And they weren't going to address any structural issues and they and they just hid it. And so they, that did not go over well, SEC and again, protecting investors um came down on the state of Illinois. In Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, the city had guaranteed four hundred and fifty five million dollars worth of uh of debt of its component units, so subentities within the umbrella of the city, uh whether under twenty, well, I don't know what their structure is, but in our world, it would be perhaps a twenty eight E or some type of joint arrangement or frankly, just city uh department or or utility. It could be utilities, for example. Um it that that guarantee and was financially crippling. And they were nearly bankrupt, but continued to sell bonds and and ultimately defaulted on on those bonds. And in hiding, and and they never disclosed the fact that, well, why were there issues on the financial exposure? They just, of those guarantees, they they hid it. They just didn't even report or make it aware. And it ultimately um cost them financially and it certainly cost them uh with with the SEC. Um South Miami borrowed for tax exempt purposes, but then disregarded the limitations associated with tax exempt debt. Uh they had an improper lease and and frankly, just gave the money to a developer in an effort to try to keep the the project moving forward, thinking that, well, this is a good business decision. We we've got to let it um try to succeed. Uh if it doesn't, then we're all going, all the debt will default anyway. And but you can't break the rule, offer one debt um or type of debt and and not follow the limitations associated with it. And so they did not disclose any of that. Uh Wes Clark School is actually kind of the po- MCDC poster child for the initiative itself. Um they entered into debt, incurred the contract, the continuing disclosure contract and obligations thereunder, never filed, not not late or did any, just never filed anything, no audits, no continuing tables. And when they went back to the market a few years later, said, we've never failed to materially comply with any of our outstanding continuous disclosure certificates. And uh obviously a patently false statement uh and which the SEC concluded was intended to deceive uh investors as to their ability or the the district's ability to meet its contractual obligations to entice bidders. Um and so they, that also did not go over well. Um in Westland's Water District, uh there were cover coverage ratio requirements as to their revenue uh needs before they could issue additional debt and they were not meeting them. And so they just manipulated the data uh and and offered and included that in their offering document. Um a serious no-no there. Uh town of Oyster Bay, uh the mayor had relationships with local developers who had some needs and really wanted to bolster and come to the city and but needed some help. And so the city guaranteed twenty million dollars of private developer loans. Um and again, never, and that the mayor had fashioned or or facilitated, um I think actually hid that from the council uh in how they were approved. I'm not exactly sure of all the nuances there, but in any event, those side deals were also never disclosed and obviously had a significant financial um were a significant financial burden as well as possibly illegal. I don't know all the nuances there, but in the materials that I've provided, uh there are some supplementary documents and and summaries that again, uh what I did was type in just kind of a summary off the side. You'll see that in in the write-up, but that you can also read the the report. But it's hidden financials, misleading projections. Uh this next one, I got to chuckle out of a little bit, and an auditor had highlighted an issue that they felt was uh outstanding and needed to be addressed with regard to potential, you know, fraud in how something a a fund was being administered. And uh that city just fired the And uh that city just fired the auditor and then proceeded forward with, well, let's just include our old audits and then drug their feet and basically lied about, well, the new audit, it will be fine and it will be clean, don't worry about it, and it's coming. There was just a hang up with the auditor, it's not, and so basically flat out lied um in an effort just to raise the funds and sell their debt. And then, you know, the final one, falsified financials, um similar to Westlands Water District up above. And so again, the two categories here, what's the takeaway? Well, do the right thing and use common sense. I mean, no one, you're in dire times if you're going to these measures and and these means to uh to try to capitalize funds. Um, hopefully you find those as shocking as as I did. But where I want to shift a little bit is where we're seeing a trend from the SEC. And in light of the fact that, A, the prevalence of social media, media, the prevalence of frankly, we live in a um need to know now society and and the news organizations are always out to, you know, corner and get the the latest scoop. Um, and so as the leaders of the community and elected officials, you will be pressed at times to speak on on something. And I throw out Elon Musk's tweet from August of 2018. Um, obviously with regard to Tesla, and as you can see, what is that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine words? Um, but in considering taking Tesla private at 420, funding secured. It's the funding secured part that was the biggest uh trip up for Mr. Musk. Uh at the time, the stock was well below 420. Uh, the SEC found that, well, he did this, I think he was frustrated. I don't know that he was trying to sway stock prices, I have no idea, but that's certainly where the SEC fell. Um, now, we are not a stock, we are not a private company. But uh with regard to statements relative to your financials, statements relative to a particular project, you want to be incredibly confident and comfortable in the information that you're disclosing. What the SEC has indicated is that they're looking, I had mentioned earlier, that there's formal disclosure and informal disclosure. And again, as the leaders of the city, the public looks to you for information. Um, and they will give credence to information that you release. Um, and so much of your debt, again, the majority of your debt is general obligation debt secured by taxes. And so uh I don't think there's much that you can say that's gonna throw off uh information there. The issue would be is if there was a revenue-driven project. The classic tale is a uh, oh, say like an event center type financing that you're financing to construct. Um, you might need multiple, there are multiple sources associated with the funding to create this new enterprise. Um, and it will never generate a dollar of revenue if you don't complete it. So all of those sources are imperative to the success of the project. Well, if you bond first um and issue debt and and are reliant then on future other sources that may or may not materialize, uh you don't want to be talking about how great this revenue and 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 this enterprise is going to be um and sort of puffing it up when we don't even have day one operations of oh, the doors open for for operations and revenue. Um, and so again, not likely a an issue for you, but I highlight Elon and and the SEC's quick, I mean, at the 20 mil, that was his penalty, $20 million, again, a stock issue. And he benefited from stock price adjustments. But um there have been uh enforcement actions relative to statements of public officials. The one got the, not the one, the guidance that the SEC has provided in this regard is that when you maintain timely financials, timely annual updates and relevant and complete data and have a, an all on Emma, and you may include, keep it, have some information available on your website and the like. But um often you refer, uh refer to Emma and say this, all official information is is found there. Um, the SEC will say, when you do that timely, well, then investors know where to get the information. If you don't, then they may seek out alternate information, the likes of anything that you might release or, you know, off the cuff comments to the newspaper reporter or uh if there were some tweets or other social media. This section in particular comes specifically from your bond uh disclosure policy that we referenced earlier. Um, you'll see that it routes through, uh information is routed through the disclosure coordinator uh and so to ensure that, A, information that you actually post is material, relevant and and accurate. Um, but also, if you, if given the opportunity to have time to respond, um, it's never a bad thing to verify any of the information that you're about to receive and run that through, you know, just the disclosure process itself that you have uh established that really protects you uh in your first offense, I mean, in the event of a a claim or action by the SEC, the first thing that we would point to is the history of, A, the written policies and all of the documentation associated with how your, you have complied with that. Um, to show that we're not just willy-nilly turning a blind eye to our obligations to the market. In fact, we've taken it very, very seriously. Um, just a few uh links, relative information of that this particular MSRB website is probably most beneficial to uh Nick and and staff and whatnot as to the information associated there that can be found for uh best practices in in posting to Emma um types of information. There's a lot of Q and As and and FAQs there, uh frankly, some training materials and videos and whatnot. But we also just have background SEC information. And then frankly, uh another, this is the SEC Basic, and then this is actually an extension of the SEC and just the various laws associated with the securities world. And so uh with that, I would open up, I've done a lot of talking. Is there anything, hopefully some, most of this is uh you've heard before. Uh, but the takeaways as far as just um obviously, common sense and do the right thing is ingrained in in your culture, that's not an issue. But the informal touches to the market and information, I think, is is an important element there, so.
Eric, I don't see any hands up at the moment. Thank you for the uh presentation and kind of gives everybody uh an idea of the complexities that go into our financial reporting and the necessity thereof. So appreciate your uh updating us and uh giving us sort of a heads up as to what our responsibilities are.
Absolutely. Um, thank you. Thank you for sharing your time, your time with me.
Yep. Scott, kick it back over you.
Mayor, thank you. I want to take an opportunity again to thank Eric for his time. Uh, he mentioned that if if there were any minor missteps, it it's very helpful to be able to point to the fact that we have those policies, but also that we have these types of conversations uh with our experts. And to be able to say that we we keep our council very well updated uh as as the rules do uh tend to change every now and then. And that we we do hold our professional staff accountable uh to also um be in current on those requirements. And we we have a relationship, obviously, uh going back decades uh with with Allers and PFM. But the the fact of the matter is, there's an awful lot of work that goes uh in in front of debt issuances with strategic conversations that we're able to have because of the knowledge that both Allers and PFM bring to the table. And I just want to stress how in invaluable that knowledge and access is uh to our community. It, there are just so many variables that come into play that allow us to issue our debt at these low interest rates that we've seen. And I I just want to recognize that Allers plays a huge, huge role in that as well. So thank you, Eric. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, uh we're right on schedule, and I believe we have Amber Lynch on our line with us. And we had asked that uh that she come forward and give us an update on all things uh great and fabulous about Invest DSM. Amber, uh hopefully you're able to take over here. Thank you.
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, Scott, and good morning, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me again. Um, let's see. Oh, there we go. Uh, let me share my screen here. Get things going. So this is our every six-month update. So the last time I was with you was in November. And just wanted to come back again and share what we've been up to over the last six months. Um, I don't think we have any members of the public on the call. I just included these first couple of slides for that purpose. But I think everyone who's on the call this morning is familiar with what Invest DSM is as an organization, how we got started, um and then, of course, the four um special investment districts that we are working in right now. So I'm gonna spend most of today on an update as to the interest we're seeing in the various programs that we've rolled out. Uh, because it's been winter, we don't have quite as many completed projects to share with you this morning. Um, but we have a lot that are in progress right now and underway. So I will spend most of the time today focusing on that. Um, before I jump into that, though, just a quick update on the operational side. Um, we are now fully independent uh from the city of Des Moines. So I am no longer on the city's payroll, um and we've moved out of the armory. We're now in our own office space, just on the south side of downtown, um on Southwest Fifth Street. Um, and uh we've completed our transition to using our own third-party IT services and accounting services. So I just want to say thank you um to Scott and to all of the city departments who have uh given us support during our incubation period and helped us transition to being um a successful third uh nonprofit organization. So I just really appreciate all the support that the city was willing to provide in in the first year and a half. Um, as far as our programs go, so we now have uh four programs that are fully up and running and available. Um, some of these we have already talked about uh with our last update, but I'll I'll share where we're at with them this time. Um, so the four that you see across the top part of the the screen, um, actually, I'm sorry. There we go. That's that's the view that I want to show you. Um, the four that you see across the top of the screen, those are the ones that we have available. So our block challenge grant, which is focused on exterior improvements and is a matching grant. Um, we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, then we have our homeowner renovation program. Uh, this is for larger home repair projects. Um, and we're seeing a lot of strong interest in that program and are starting to see our first projects get completed through that program as well. Um, we also have a program available for developers to do both rehab in the special investment districts as well as new construction of single-family homes. Um, and then in December, we rolled out a uh commercial grant program. Um, so I'll talk about that a little bit as well. We are still working on a rental rehab program that should be available later this year. Um, and so we're working through the logistics of what that is going to look like. Um, and then we have a couple of other things going on that I want to talk about today as well. Um, so as far as the block challenge grant goes, uh we've had this closed over the last six months because since it's focused on exterior repairs, it's really a seasonal program. Um, so we've just opened that up for new applications as of April 1st. Um, and we already have a meeting uh with our first team that's interested on 42nd Street this evening. Um, so we expect to have strong interest in this program again this year. Uh, we did make a couple of adjustments to the program based on feedback that we received um and also uh based on just our observations of how it worked in the different special investment districts last year. Um, the biggest change is that we relaxed the the thresholds just a little bit in the Oak Park and the Columbus Park Special Investment Districts. Um, what we've heard is that neighbors just don't know each other quite as well. And so requiring them to get a team of five different people together was a little bit difficult for them. So we've tried to make that a bit easier um and upped the incentive. So if they have a team of at least three neighbors participating together on a block, they'll get a match of up to $1,500 from us. Um, and then if they have a team of over seven people, that's when they get that higher $2,500 match. Um, we also limited the ma, the number of people who can be included on one single team, more for administrative reasons. Um, we were getting some teams last year that were close to 30 people. Um, and it's just a lot to try and review and get that team moving forward all at once. So we've capped that as um 19 people that can be on one team. Um, homeowner renovation then, so this program we rolled out, I think we made it available in August last year. So we were just getting going at the time I last presented to city council. Um, we are seeing really strong interest in this program um across all four special investment districts, but especially in Franklin. Um, so you can see the numbers there, we have about uh just under 160 people total who have applied um and are working that their way through that uh process. So we have close to 50 projects that have been um approved and are under construction. Um, and then seven that have been completed so far. Um, we are well on our way to meeting our goals for this fiscal year. Um, I, Franklin has kind of blown us out of the water, as has Drake. Um, so it's exciting to see uh the strong interest in this program. Um, just a couple of examples, uh so this was a house in Drake. Um, they opened up and built a new back deck uh with the pergola structure um and then also added a radon mitigation system to their home. Um, this is in Columbus Park uh and is part of a larger project. But um as you can see in the before photo, uh there was a need for new gutters and and soffit. And so um that is part of this project, they're also replacing their driveway and doing a remodel on their kitchen. Um, and then uh we do have some, this is probably one of the biggest projects that we have right now, uh putting a two-story addition on a home in Franklin. Um, we do have some projects in uh Oak Park that are going as well. We just didn't have any uh photos ready to share on those. But just a couple of examples of the types of projects that we're seeing uh through this program. Um, we're also seeing things like siding and window replacement, um adding bathrooms um and uh kitchen remodels again. My slides will advance here. There we go. Um, so then the developer rehab program. So we have a a couple of developers that we're working with right now and and some projects in progress. And then we also have um a few properties that Invest DSM has purchased and then we've contracted for a rehab to be done. So you can see the numbers here, we have a few of them going in, I we have a few of them going in Franklin. Um, one that should be complete and is actually already pre-sold. Um, and then a second one that has just gotten started. Um, we have several in Drake, um and in the Drake neighborhood. Uh, some of the ones that Invest DSM has acquired are multi-unit conversions that we will be taking back to single-family homes, which has been a long-term goal of the neighborhood to reduce density in some of those um homes that were originally built as single-family. Um, and have been converted over the years. Um, we have several going in Oak Park, two of them should be done in the next couple of months here up on Seneca. Um, and then one that is just at the beginning. Um, and then we have a couple um of of homes that we've purchased in that area that are also in really poor condition uh that we'll be taking down and then uh packaging some of those lots for new construction. Um, same thing in Columbus Park, so we have one there that were in the design stage on a rehab. Um, and then a number of lots that I shared last time um that we've purchased and and demolished the homes um in the redevelopment area. Uh, and so we're doing some visioning work right now on what new construction could look like. Um, and I think will be And I think we'll be doing an RFQ, trying to find willing developers and home builders that would like to work with us in that neighborhood. On the commercial side, so we've done a number of projects, especially in Oak Park, but also the Varsity Cinema in Drake, where we've had them come through our board individually and kind of responded to what the need was on that particular project. In addition to that, we have also rolled out a commercial grant program. It's a matching grant that's very similar to what the city put together as the revamped Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. In fact, we worked closely with economic development staff to make sure that those two programs were complementary to each other, but could also be layered in the event of a project that really needed both sources of funds. So, ours is really intended for some of the smaller projects. And then bigger projects tend to work with economic development on either the NCR program or through TIF. But we have a $10,000 or an up to $10,000 match for pre-development work, trying to help people get some of the architectural, engineering, and environmental studies done that can be at a lot of cost on the front end of a project. And then we'll match up to $25,000 for construction. We're focusing on a lot of similar things as the city. So, you know, exterior facade, windows and roofs, other, other exterior components could be signage, awnings, those sorts of things. But then also helping with those code compliance upgrades. So, things that would be permanent to the building or semi-permanent to the building, installing grease interceptors, making the restrooms ADA accessible, upgrading electrical and plumbing systems. So, some of those things. We just recently approved our first project through that program and it is in the Drake Special Investment District. So, we'll have more information available on that one later this year. We've also, we have some funding in the projects that Benchmark is going to be doing up at the intersection of Sixth and Euclid in Oak Park. And we're excited to see those buildings start to get taken care of. So, they have those in their possession now and are starting to work towards construction. This is just a quick snapshot. Carrie Cruz and I did a presentation for the Fuse Chamber earlier in March and we're taking a look at, these are just a snapshot of the projects where we have funds committed in the Oak Park Highland Park Special Investment District on, at that Sixth and Euclid Business District. We've got quite a critical mass going on now. You know, some of these have been in partnership with Neighborhood Development Corporation. They've been a fantastic partner in this area. And then some of them have been standalone projects, either with a developer, a private developer, or with the building owner. And so, I was looking at the dollars of that. Invest DSM has committed about one and a half million to these projects. And the total investment is upwards of eight million at this point. And we know that there are more projects coming. So, that's just, that's an exciting thing that I wanted to make sure to share today. A couple of other things that sort of fall outside of our typical programs that we are working on as well. We received a grant from Microsoft, a Community Empowerment Grant. Last, I guess it was in December that, that we got notice of that grant. That's in partnership with the city of Des Moines. We're working with Jeremy Karen on that. And it was really an idea that he had put together with Central College. And so, Invest DSM is mainly acting as the fiscal agent on that. But we are also focusing some stormwater management solutions on the Oak Park Highland Park Special Investment District. So, we have a class of Central College students that are looking at three different sites right now. And are doing a bit of design work on what some stormwater treatments could look like. We're looking at summer installation on that and have a presentation coming up to the Neighborhood Association next week. We also partnered last fall with Bravo Greater Des Moines to host an artist-in-residence as kind of an adjunct staff person at Invest DSM. Her name is Eleanor Khan. She's based in Chicago, but from Iowa originally. And she has been focusing on place-making ideas in one of our neighborhood commercial districts. Her focus has been on the Dogtown District, which has been in line with what the West Side Chamber and a number of Dogtown business owners have been working on with respect to kind of reviving and, and rebranding an identity for that area. So, she is working on concepts right now and is going to be looking at hopefully an early summer installation, even if it's a temporary artwork that would help to kind of kickstart other efforts in that area. So, that is coming along as well. We are, we have been working with code enforcement staff lately. We had a couple of properties that Invest DSM acquired that were formerly rentals. And so, Sue Ann has brought her inspection supervisors through those properties to do some tours. And they'll be using them for some trainings of staff on things that should have been cited as violations. And so, we've been talking closely with code enforcement about how that can work better in some of these special investment districts and then how that kind of spills over into the rest of the city. Also, just a note on some of the things that we're doing with outreach and engagement this year. We've kind of reconvened all of the steering committee groups that were part of the planning process and then asked those members if they still want to participate in being closely aligned with this work and then added some new people to those groups. We're meeting with them quarterly. We've just had the first set of those meetings in the last few weeks here. We also have groups that we're meeting with specifically around the business districts in both Drake and Oak Park Highland Park. We're hoping we can do a little bit more door-to-door outreach this year as summer comes along. That was really difficult last year with the pandemic and certainly we still want to be careful around that. And then we've also, just in the last few weeks, done a post-card mailing. You can see the picture there. That went out to all households in Oak Park and Columbus Park, to all of our owner occupants in Drake, since these particular programs are focused on homeowners. And then we have so much interest in Franklin right now. We're just holding off on doing any more advertising for the moment. But we're keeping an eye on which blocks are not participating and, and then we'll be reaching out to those later in the summer. We're also working on hiring a summer intern. We're specifically looking for someone who's bilingual in Spanish, who can help us with translating some materials, but also outreach to some of our Spanish-speaking residents in these areas. So, that's what we have going on, just a little bit of what we have going on, on the outreach front. And really, that's kind of the update for me at this point. Like I said, we've got a lot of things in play, but not a lot of new, new things that have been completed over the last six months that I'm ready to share. So, Councilman Gatto, I see that you have your hand up, but I'm happy to take any questions from anybody as well.
Amber, thank you. Great presentation. Question regards to Columbus Park. Have you gathered the steering committee back together again in that area also?
We did just last week for the first time. Yes.
And then it's my understanding that I believe either they're going to try to have a meeting in June in person or either at the school, if they're able to get into the school. If not, they're going to do it at Columbus Park. So, it might be, might be good if somebody was, was there. I think that would be beneficial to, to all of us. Because I believe they will have the election of their officers that night for the, for the Neighborhood Association. So, I think there'll be a, a larger group that night than we would see any other nights. And I believe the Water Trails will also be giving a presentation if they do intend to have a meeting in person that night too. So, you'll probably get, the biggest group out of the neighborhood would be that night.
Okay, great. Yep. We were aware that they were exploring June 1st as a date. But yes, I think that's good, a good suggestion for us to have some information there. I think one of us will certainly plan to be there.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Amber, thank you very much. Good update on Invest DSM. And look forward to your updates as we move along. I'm sure the, with all the projects that are going on in each of the wards, I think all of our council is interested in watching us try to help neighborhoods and, and residents improve their properties and, and keep Des Moines looking great. So, thanks for your, for your work.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Scott, back to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Also want to send out my thanks to Amber with all the great work. But also want to do a shout out to our partners in the effort, right? The, the county, Polk County is a fabulous, critical partner in, in Invest DSM. And it is my understanding that they fully intend to stay invested at the same level that they have been with, with the $5 million level. So, really, really appreciate their commitment to this initiative as well. So, any opportunity to speak with our county supervisors to thank them would be, would be helpful. So, please do that. Thank you, Amber.
Yep. Councilman Boss, it looks like you have your hand up as well. And I don't know if any of our board members wanted to jump in and say anything either, but.
Sure. Thanks, Amber. This is, I think for me in 2020, this was one of the bright lights of years participating on Invest DSM Board. And I was actually raising my hand to ask Mayor County if we could have a little coffee and a bathroom break before we start the next presentation.
Yeah, will that work?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was going to suggest either now or after the next one. And does look like you might have Connie as well still like to speak.
Yeah, I'm not asking for the break. I just wanted to thank Amber and her staff for what they've been able to accomplish. And you know, it was a difficult year last year to be starting anything. But I think we're achieving the goals that we set out for. We're outing housing into areas, you know, over in the Highland Park area. More apartments are coming online that had not been available. And just all the improvements to the businesses and the homes and the excitement within the neighborhoods. We've been able to accomplish what we have set out and look forward to expanding the programs.
All right, Scott, why don't we take a quick 15-minute break and come back? What do you think about a quarter up?
Yeah, that works fine. It's what it, yep. We'll have the other.
And then we're going to have a lunch break? And at what time is that going to occur?
So, depending on how the next one goes, we can have the remaining speakers available to go immediately after, in which case we could work through the lunch hour and be done. If, if that's a desire of the council, or we can take a break and bring the last two topics back.
Okay, well.
We're going forward. Keep going on it.
All right, let's take our 15 minutes and we'll come right back.
Hey, are we about ready to start up again?
I put 1:45, waiting for the mayor to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got one minute.
All right.
Okay, I didn't didn't see. I didn't time it.
Okay, Scott, let's get going. I think everybody's on. And we can get moving through this and maybe we can get get it done and get a late lunch.
That sounds good. We'll have the other speakers get be available as well. So this next topic was asked by council to look into and research what other communities do with their scrub-like efforts. And compare that to what we're doing to see if there's any improvements or alternatives that we could consider. So I know Public Works has dove into that and we have Jonathan Gaynor here. I will hand it over to him. And again, thanks for everyone's time. John?
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. I trust everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Good deal. Okay, so the the approximate question that started this discussion here was looking at. Okay, now can we do a one-time citywide free curbside collection, not unlike many of the suburbs do? And I'll give the short answer to that question is is that that the metro communities that do a spring cleanup do that. As by way of quick explanation, a once per year kind of a everyone sets their bulk items out on the curb and the the cash hauler comes through and takes it all away. In some communities, that takes one day. In other communities, that takes two day. In the case of West Des Moines, that takes an entire week. The the exception in the metro is Ankeny, which only only offers a drop-off site. So the the challenge of this is that we are substantially larger community than any of the other members of the metro. And we were unable to find a contractor that was willing to perform that service in a way that looks like what the other members of the metro are able to offer their residents. We do have, the the scrub is both more generous and less generous in some ways, and I'll walk through what those are. Each of those spring cleanup communities offer a one-time set out for what they describe as about a pickup truck beds worth of material, an eight by four by two kind of quantity of material. And in Des Moines, you can visit the scrub in any of the nine times that we have it open with a pickup truck and a trailer's worth of material. A small, single-axle trailer is permissible. So quite a bit more material. The less generous part of it is that you do have to, it is self-service, so you do have to haul it there yourself. And that is the the point of contention for those that that wonder why we can't have something like the suburbs have. And but but we have a drop-off service available that allows one to get rid of substantially larger quantity of material. And by having nine different times through the through the warmer months of the year, it lets you dispose of that material at your convenience rather than just once per year for free. Now, the other way that that the scrub is more generous is that the curbside collection programs in those suburban communities of the metro are limited to single-family through fourplex. The the customers of franchised municipal municipally-collected solid waste in Des Moines and Ankeny, the drop-off models are open to any resident. So a consideration in in play there is that that a curbside-only method of bulk trash disposal would almost certainly need to cut out a very large proportion of the population of Des Moines that presently enjoys the free drop-off service, though you do have to haul your own material. So the a a quick walk back through history, the scrub was started in 2004 as a neighborhood cleanup program with 34 locations, what we would now call a mini scrub, because of the the changes and adaptations of the program, where dumpsters were placed in parking lots or in the street and and sponsored by and hosted by volunteers from the various neighborhood associations. The very next year after it started, we opened up the transfer station as a destination. And neighborhood associations started consolidating because it is a bit of an onerous logistics task to try to do that much scrub activity. And that that consolidation continued until we got to what we're we're all very familiar with, the relatively recently mega scrubs are hosted in what used to be five locations in the perennial location at the transfer station. Recently, we lost a sponsoring organization in the south at the also the neighborhood associations that had been supporting that selected to to drop, continuing to do so. So we're presently running four mega scrubs sites across the community and the monthly, every month location at the transfer station. And that that gets you to the 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 formation of the program has started as an urban cleanup, a neighborhood cleanup. And it's steadily morphed into what has turned into just, it's just how we do bulk trash. And so it's it's, I don't have pride of authorship in the program. It long predated my arrival by about 10 years. So the we're more than willing to to consider alternatives. But the 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 benefit to the way we currently do scrub is that that no city employee touches the garbage. It is all self-service, so it is incredibly cost efficient. We dispose of three and a half million pounds of bulk trash through the mega scrubs and the monthly scrub at the transfer station. And we do that for a cost of only $250,000. And we do so without the risk of injury or equipment wear and tear and so on. We are simply hosting at the transfer station and the logistics backend of the mega scrubs is performed by a contractor with the hook trucks to pull to pick up and pull the big dumpsters and cycle them out so that the residents, again, self-service, pull up in their car, truck, or trailer and load the material into the dumpsters themselves. There is one community that does a that that does similarly self-perform their garbage collection like we do, and that's the city of Urbandale. And they don't hire a contractor for their spring cleanup. They have the same approach to spring cleanup as the rest of the communities. Where they get, where they make an allowance for one pickup truck's load worth of material set out on the curb in for their spring cleanup day, they then hire extra staff and work their teams through through the cleanup routes over the course of a week and self-perform that work. Were we to try to adopt the Urbandale model, we could expect to collect using using Urbandale's experience of how much of a volume of garbage they pick up on the side of the road, extrapolate it out to Des Moines, we could expect to pick up 2.8 million pounds of garbage for the cost of $750,000. So a tripling of the expense with the possibility of incurring additional liabilities through worker injuries. And we would certainly need to to acquire additional equipment in order to do that. So as I said, the the scrub, though it is self-service and that is less generous than the the curbside access model, it is more generous in other ways and incredibly cost efficient. So the the most recent resident satisfaction survey put the scrub in the the quadrant of the boxes of city services in Public Works and Engineering that were favorably considered, where we exceeded expectations. And by a ratio of four to one, there are more residents satisfied than dissatisfied with it. Almost every time we we post a scrub notice, we get a, you know, a solitary comment about people wondering, you know, they'll comment, you know, my daughter lives in in West Des Moines, why can't we have a free curbside setup like that? And as I said, the short answer is that there's no contractor that will do that for us, even on a quarterly. We would clearly not be able to do the the, you know, one-time pass, you know, a week-long pass through the city like like West Des Moines does. So we did ask them about working up to one word at a time, and they similarly declined their interest in performing that service for us. their interest in performing that service for us. So in in my discussions with the city manager, he asked me point-blank, what are my recommendations? And and bulk trash is one of those things where, as we dug deeper into into what the practices are of other communities that are similarly sized to Des Moines, that that there is a veritable smorgasbord of options. And what that tells me is that unlike routine garbage collection, where everybody has has gravitated over the last twenty years towards automated side-loading collection and away from the the rear packer trucks that that we all know from earlier decades, there's no best practice. There's no one silver bullet best way to do to do bulk collection. What we we did start the scrub as as a, you know, reducing urban light is the RUB and scrub. It was a neighborhood cleanup program intended to to achieve many of the same goals as Invest DSM was just talking about. It's it's kind of reached what I would consider a steady state where it's not doing the function of of neighborhood cleanup anymore. It's just, this is how we get rid of bulk trash in Des Moines. And it is both more generous and less generous in different ways. And changes will have impacts to different populations and and quantities and costs accordingly. So I I do have two ideas that would be, you know, what I would consider suitable paths to try something different if that was if that was the the consensus of the council. And the first is coming back to Invest DSM, using the special investment districts as a targeted area for trying something different. We were in discussions with the Invest DSM team in 2019 to try something out in 2020, because a part of those neighborhood revitalization plans is organize a mini-scrub, kind of back to make the scrub back to its roots inside the confines of the inside the confines of those districts. And they do make some very compact footprints. Some are, you know, more clearly defined by street boundaries than others. So they present an opportunity to try a different thing, whatever that might be, in a specific location to to kind of try it out. There being, in my opinion, no best practice for how to do bulk trash. It it kind of makes kind of makes it up to, you know, policy and preference and and, you know, those that those accidents of institutional history that lead different cities to make those decisions to handle their bulk trash in different ways. Another candidate for for a limited population is our special collection service qualified residents. About 2% of our residents are on what we call the special collection service. That's where the where the refuse collector will exit their truck and walk up to the to the home, retrieve the cart, dump it, and then put the cart back for those who have a demonstrated physical need or inability to to be able to to do so on a on a regular basis. So there there's a a pre-existing limited population where we to try something with curbside collection service. And this will be a way to to step into that and kind of try it out or pilot it and see how it would work and if it would be appropriate for rolling out on a larger scale. So two two ways to limit that either by population or by geographic area that I can suggest. And and in our survey on peer cities, the and I threw in the Capital Crossroads 2.0 benchmark cities, the kind of stretch goal cities, I'll just throw the results up there. There's, like I said, if you pick eighty cities on our roster, you'll get sixty different ways that they do bulk trash. And we're we're not unique in offering the drop-off sites, nor are we unique in failing to offer curbside collection. It's oftentimes, as we see in the Capital Crossroads 2.0 cities and these larger communities, it's tax-supported, so it's not a user-fee-generated service. But the there are there are plenty of options available if the collective we wish to move off the model that we're on now. I don't have, as I go back to these, you know, one reason why we would would not have already done this is that the citizen satisfaction surveys suggest that it's not something that we we don't have the data to say, you need to do this differently, because the residents are by and large mostly satisfied with the service as it is. So I don't have the data to just unilaterally invent a new way to do this. But but that being said, there are so many different ways to do bulk trash in a community our size that that, you know, they're all they're all valid options. They just have different considerations for inclusion of residents and or quantity of trash that could be that could be disposed of.
Jonathan, it looks like Joe's got his hand up.
Mayor, Mayor, thank you. Jonathan, thank you for going to work on this. You know, my intention was never to eliminate the four scrub mega scrub days that you offer. That was never my intention when we when we brought this forward. Curious, which which companies did you reach out to that weren't weren't receptive of even doing it ward by ward or, you know, not not trying to throw it all together in one week to do the entire city? That would be one of my first questions. I have I have a few others, but that would be one of my first questions to you. Who did you reach out to?
Sure, I I really thought that the 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 word-by-word option would be more appealing because it would break the city up into you know, a grouping that is roughly the size of of West Des Moines' population. But we reached out to the two largest companies in the metro waste management and waste connections, both of whom do perform this service in other communities. My guess is that it's because the spring cleanup option is bundled in with their franchise garbage collection that that they that that it's not optional for the contractors to perform. They they have to offer it if they want to bid on on garbage collection in those communities.
Gotcha. So so the extra five, the the extra $500,000, because you said it's 750,000 for us to do it ourselves. What does that consist of? I mean, what what additional equipment? You mentioned something you would need to purchase additional equipment. What is that? And what is, why is it so much of a additional cost to 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 do that?
The, as I, as I said, with the cost-efficient nature of the current scrub, it takes very few people, and they don't, and they're more directing traffic and monitoring for for residency compliance and, you know, size and and weight limitations. So we we get rid of that 3.5 million pounds of garbage with without touching, and that's the big difference. If we have to do collection of that material, it takes a lot more people to handle that material. Right now, our residents are doing it for us as with the self-service model. So the 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 estimation of adopting the Urbandale model is by taking the since Urbandale is set up almost exactly as we are solid waste-wise, because they self-perform their their garbage hauling.
Right.
We took their costs per household and scaled it up to scaled it up to the 68,000 households.
So so I think at a minimum, we should start doing both of the things that you, I I'd like to see more of a firm cost and and what exactly would be put out on the curb. And if you did the Invest DSM areas, and I think that the benefit for those that can't transport those are the majority of the people, you're probably picking up their cart, which I appreciate that you that you that you noticed that. I I think that that's those two suggestions that you did. I mean, I would like to see, I'd like to see that happen. And I'd like to see, you know, that way we can get more of a defined cost. I do not want the mega scrub days to to end. I I've never, when when I brought it up at the last strategic meeting, I know there may be some confusion, but that was never my intention to have those mega scrub days in. It was to provide an additional service for those that can't bring it there, an additional service for the rest of our residents, depending on what the cost would be. And one other question, when you budget for snow removal and we don't use the snow remover or salt and sand, that money's still in your budget. Could we not take some of that and use it for this type of cleanup?
I I don't think so. That's road-use tax monies, which is typically not something that can be redirected to municipal solid waste.
You don't have any general fund money in your budget that that would be able that you use for any type of snow removal or salt purchase?
No, no, Public Works gets less than 1% of our budget from the general fund.
Okay. Well, at a minimum, I'd like to see both of those, both of those things implemented. And we can see how where, you know, I think you said it yourself, then it was intended to do neighborhood cleanup. And I think it has steadied out to where it really isn't, and it's the same people using it, doing the same thing. And, you know, a lot of those are I don't think it's doing what it was intended to do. That's not to say that I want it to stop, because I I've participated in some of those scrub days. And, I mean, there's there's lots of stuff that that come out. But I would like to see the other portion of your recommendation implemented. And Scott, we can, we can talk further about how that happens, but that would be a, that'd be a good start. And then we can get more of a firm cost if you did those special districts and and see what people would put out there. See how how daunting it would be.
Yep, we'd we'd started those discussions with Invest DSM, and we're fully intending to do something in 2020 when the pandemic really just shut down our our planning. I mean, we shut down two scrubs entirely at the very beginning of the pandemic before we figured out midsummer how to how to do the scrub safely and started a backup again.
Right, right.
We we that's still an element of the neighborhood revitalization plans. We still owe it to the neighborhoods to to follow through on that piece there. I I think the special investment districts make for a good confined boundary to and and with good reason, offer an additional service. It's right in the plan.
Yeah, that's good. Well, thank you for all your work on that.
Sure thing.
Jonathan, are you finished? You need some more questions?
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, and I'm out of things to say, so I'll yield the floor back to your mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I don't have that much more to say on this item either. Scott, let's move ahead.
Well, Mayor, actually, if I could, I I'm, I want to make sure silence means that they're agreeable with the rest of the council. I I think it makes perfect sense to move forward with those two recommendations. I we've heard from from Councilman Gatto. Any any concerns? Otherwise, we will move forward with with those. I I think it makes perfect sense.
We're not looking for a vote here. We're just looking for a sort of a thumbs up. Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, because it'll have to come back to you through budget adjustments.
All right, I'm thinking silence is golden here. I think you're getting a
All right. Thank you. Okay, yeah, Mayor, so then then we're on to moving forward with the conversation about all the different benefits of COVID funding that we received. And I don't want to steal the thunder of of our next speaker, so I won't. There's there's been a lot of great work, and this is an opportunity to kind of compile that. This this is a presentation that we can share with council in case you're in neighborhood meetings and you want to also share similar information with with our your constituencies. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over. I don't know if if Chris was going to start out or if we're going to jump right in with with Lisa and Lisa Krabs and Naomi from Economic Development. I do see Lisa's on.
Yep, yep, I can go ahead and start. Unless Chris wants to to cut me off, that's fine too. But I'll go ahead and share my screen. Let's see. All right, are you all able to see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to go ahead and get that started here if I can. Okay. So thank you all for giving some of your time today to listen to us talk about COVID response. We thought it would be helpful to bring this to your attention and have some quarterly updates because in addition to everything that's going on anyway, you know, add the layer of a pandemic and different programs that we've that you all have been approving at council agendas and and whatnot. Just thought this would be a nice, a nice way to tie some of it together and keep updated. So today, I'm Lisa Krabs. I'll be doing some of the upfront presentation. And in addition, we have Naomi Hamlet and Katie Hernandez with Development Services, who will also be presenting a more focused information on the economic development response programs. So that was kind of our plan is, we'll kind of give you a high-level overview of what's been going on, but then each quarter focus, take a deep dive on on one or two programs that make sense. So today in the presentation, we'll cover again just high-level programs, the timeline of how we got here, the high-level financial information as well, and with a focus on the small business recovery and dine-out Des Moines programs. So so far, these are the programs that council has approved and I'll kind of skip over small business and dine out because Naomi and Katie will cover those later. But we've funded rental assistance and mortgage relief, and the housing assistance has come out of CDBG funds and treasury funds, and it's been about fifty, 57% of the total assistance has gone to some sort of housing assistance in that capacity, including the homelessness programs. So we did break out homelessness because there is some differences, obviously, but there is also some similarities. So part of the homelessness response is including rent assistance for those who are on the verge of eviction, have an eviction notice, rapid rehousing, and then also emergency shelter, including hotel and motel vouchers. To date, it looks like we've assisted more than 1,300 households with the rent or mortgage assistance, and then another 3,500 persons through the homelessness programs, including 500 children. Another program that we've approved is the Emergency Food Distribution Program, which took place last summer, and I think many of you participated and are familiar with it, but we served over 50,000 meals last year. And then finally, the most recent programs that were approved in the latest round of COVID response funding are mental health and childcare. So those are currently under the contracting process. And so we don't have any results, but hope to later in the year. This is a timeline of how we've got here. I don't think this is too surprising to anyone. It's been a pretty tumultuous year, and we thought the the timeline looks a little busy, but that's probably very representative of how we all feel. So starting with January 31st, that's when the public health emergency was declared in the US, and then March 15th is when we had the mayor's proclamation here in Des Moines. March 27th is when the CARES Act was signed. And that's important because that is the the item that basically authorized a lot of the funding that we received. So when you see CDBG or ESG, those are the funding sources that came out of the CARES Act. I'm not going to go through every single approval item here on this timeline, but you'll see there's been several rounds. There's been three rounds of CDBG and two rounds of ESG. And then if we move into January of 2021, we also added in the US Treasury's funding for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And that's that was authorized under the And that's, uh, that was authorized under the Consolidated Appropriations Act for twenty twenty-one. So a little bit different, um, but still a COVID response. And then also, it's important to note, uh, most recently in March, the American Rescue Plan was signed as well. So, um, there will be additional funding coming with that, but, um, that's not in the presentation today. It's just more of a heads up. So to kind of break it down, um, you can see that the U.S. Treasury funding has so far been the highest source of funding at six point four million, and that's all for emergency rental assistance. The next, uh, funding highest, the next highest funding level is the CDBG program at five point five million. And the CDBG program is really, um, the, the largest scope that we can use. So we used it again for a little bit of housing assistance, that rent or mortgage. Uh, we were able to use it for the mental health and childcare services. We used a little bit for PPE. Um, and then the emergency food distribution. The next largest source is the ESG funds, and that's three point one million. And the ESG funds are dedicated only to homelessness programs. So that's the, again, the homelessness prevention, which is, um, basically rent or utility assistance to prevent eviction, the rapid rehousing and emergency shelter. And then finally, we also have, uh, some kick-ins from the general fund and other funding as well, which, um, Naomi and Katie will kind of touch on in their, in their part of the presentation. And overall, there's been about sixteen two, sixteen point two million either distributed or allocated to Des Moines residents. So, um, pretty significant. From here, I will go ahead and hand it off to Naomi to talk more about small business recovery.
Good morning, everyone. Naomi Hamlet with Development Services, the Office of Economic Development. Talking to you about the Small Business Recovery Grant. Uh, if you want to go to the next slide, Lisa. As shown on Lisa's previous slide, um, the use of CDBG and city general funds for the Small Business Recovery Grant was approved by council back in May of twenty twenty. The program was created in order to provide funding to small businesses who have been affected by COVID nineteen. This effort was part of a larger effort across the metro area. You can see how many partners we have listed there. The Greater Des Moines Partnership spearheaded this larger effort. Many suburbs and even a few communities in Warren County were also involved. The partnership paid for a contract with the Iowa Center for Economic Success, who handled most of the application process as well as the underwriting process. This allowed for a seamless look for the businesses regardless of where their business was located. However, City of Des Moines only put money in for City of Des Moines businesses. The partnership also did private fundraising amongst the larger businesses in the metro, and that private fundraising resulted in almost two dollars per capita to each community that was involved. And then Pope County also helped to fund the program with donations based on a percentage of each city's unencumbered donation. So that was the other that you saw in the previous slide, the partnership and Pope County information. Um, the City of Des Moines was the only city who used CDBG funds for this program. Um, some of the other cities aren't large enough to be eligible for CDBG. The federal funds, of course, came with strings, uh, so only certain census tracts were eligible for CDBG funds. Uh, we were able to use, uh, CDBG funds for those businesses in particular tracts, as long as all the other requirements were met. We had thirty-three applications out of the one hundred forty-two that met those requirements. And the last partner on our list, the Iowa Empowerment Fund, they had a program of their own that also was focused on small businesses. Um, they had quite a few partners that included groups that typically work with immigrant communities and other small businesses. Um, I'll just list a few: Immigrant Entrepreneur Summit, the Directors Council, League of United Latin American Citizens, One Voice, Dream Iowa, Iowa Community Capital, and quite a few others. Uh, their effort was a statewide program. Their applications for Des Moines, however, were funneled to us. And then we were able to fund a nun, a number of them that met our criteria. There are about thirty-three applications that they received for Des Moines, and we funded about twenty-five of those. Just a couple of comments on eligibility. Uh, businesses had to be for profit, so no nonprofit, uh, businesses were allowed, and we wanted zero to thirty employees. That was our definition of small. Um, physical business, we were looking for brick and mortar locations, so we did not fund food trucks. Um, the grants were up to ten thousand dollars. Other cities had a max of five thousand dollars, but ours were, were larger. Um, the Iowa Empowerment Fund, though, had a maximum of thirty-five hundred, so we stuck with that for their program. Next slide. The results, I've already mentioned, we, we helped one hundred and forty-two businesses. And of those, twenty-seven were women-owned, twenty-two minority-owned, and then twenty-three were both women and minority-owned. So over fifty percent were either women or minority-owned, and it might be more than that. Um, not all applicants answered that question in our application, and it wasn't required. It wasn't any kind of purposeful, uh, reason for reviewing the, the applications. We just wanted to know that for statistics after the fact. Regarding what the grant meant for businesses, uh, we received a couple emails from businesses just to, to say thanks, and I just wanted to read a portion of one of them.
Did we lose her?
I'm thinking we did. Uh, does someone else want to over the presentation from the group?
Yeah, yeah, um, let's see here. I think the next part is, okay, so we can, um, pick up. It's too bad because the, the letter from Naomi that she was going to read is very, it's very sweet. So, um, the person basically states that they'd like to give us all a hug, that, you know, um, allocated the funding for the small businesses. So very appreciative. And from what I understand, there were several notes like that from different business owners. So what you have here is a map. And, um, you may have already seen this, uh, as a handout. Um, working with the Public Information Office, we're going to have so, uh, one sheet handout for each program once they're completed. Uh, giving some breakdown of the statistics that can be shared, um, with the public. And then on the Small Business Recovery one, we'll have this map on the back as well. And it just shows the distribution of, um, the women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and where the assistance went across the city. So next we'll have Dine Out Des Moines, and Katie, are you, are you on? We didn't lose you too, did we?
Yep, I'm on here.
Perfect, okay.
Um, Katie Hernandez, uh, Development Services Department, the Office of Economic Development Division. Um, thanks for having us this morning. I'll kind of talk through the Dine Out Des Moines program. Um, there are, uh, you want to advance to the next slide, Lisa? Please. Um, there are two separate programs under this brand, so I'll kind of talk through both of them. Um, the first listed is the Delivery and Takeout Financial Assistance Program. Um, that is an effort, uh, targeted to the local restaurant community and here in Des Moines. Um, the, that is a general fund allocation of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, we'll kind of get into more details on that program, um, on the next slide. Uh, the other program is the Temporary Outdoor Seating Exceptions Program. So um, that just allows a little bit more flexibility to our restaurant community, um, in response to COVID. Um, and just a little bit more, um, distance in, uh, the seating and capacity for restaurants. So Lisa, do you want to jump to the next one? Okay, so the Delivery and Takeout, um, Dine Out Des Moines program, um, some details on this program. Um, the intent is to, uh, to preserve the unique flavors that we have here in Des Moines offered by our local restaurants. Um, the eligibility for this program, uh, you must be a physical, uh, or a restaurant with a physical location in Des Moines. Um, we are, uh, we have, uh, disqualified any restaurants with drive-throughs, just recognizing that, um, a drive-through is, um, you know, already available infrastructure to deliver, um, uh, food service safely. Uh, the, the restaurants must have had at least three waitstaff prior to COVID. Um, recognizing that we, uh, our, our focus is, is more of a dine-in, um, experience type restaurant versus a single staff kind of counter service, um, operation. Um, they must have been in business since December of twenty nineteen, so pre-pandemic, and then a year-over-year loss of, of twenty percent as a result of, um, COVID nineteen, which unfortunately is, um, is, uh, not a disqualifier for um, all of the restaurants that have applied. So, um, the process, so each, each restaurant can receive up to seventy-five hundred dollars um, throughout the, the term of the program. There are four rounds. Um, round one started in December, and we just opened up round four, um, today for, um, for March twenty twenty-one uh, orders. Um, so that will go through the end of April. Um, those, those applications will be received through the end of April. Um, the eligible items for reimbursement are ta- uh, takeout and delivery supplies, so things like warmer bags, disposable containers, um, other, other supplies to facilitate delivery and takeout, um, service. Uh, it does not cover consumables, equipment, payroll, or third-party delivery services. Um, and it is a first-come, first-served program. Um, I will kind of touch on where we're at right now in terms of numbers. Um, it is an ongoing program, so, um, these are a little bit, uh, preliminary as far as numbers, but so far, we've received a hundred and four applications, um, since the opening of this program. Um, eighty-five of those have been approved for funding, um, resulting in about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, um, in awards, in grant, grant, uh, grant awards. Uh, six applications were deemed ineligible or avoided, uh, due to a lack of response. And thirteen of those are pending currently, um, just awaiting a couple of, uh, pieces of additional information in order to process payment. Um, okay, we can shift to the next slide. The other program, which actually was introduced before the Delivery and Takeout Restaurant Assistance Program, is, um, the, the program that is focused on outdoor seating. Um, this program is, uh, intended to assist and aid restaurants and bars in meeting social distancing requirements and guidelines. Um, so it allows it just a little bit more flexibility in terms of outdoor seating. Um, this program is actually administered by the Neighborhood Services Department from the city's, um, administrative, uh, process. So we do have Sue and Donovan, Donovan on the line, um, if there are specific questions for this program, um, but I can kind of talk through the details. Um, it is, uh, the eligibility requirements, it must be a food service establishment or bar. Um, the seating is allowed on a private parking lot, private sidewalk, public sidewalk or street. And then, um, the placement of tables, chairs, and a temporary barrier must be in the permitted area upon, um, administrative approval. Um, so it is a pretty streamlined process. They apply for a permit, um, they fill out the permit agreement um, and deliver it to the Neighborhood Services Department, and, um, the requirements are to have a completed agreement site plan and required exhibits. Um, we did hear, uh, a couple of.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Linda's got her hand up. I need to get a quick question.
Go ahead, Linda.
Oops, sorry, I, my hand was up actually to a previous slide where it showed the locations of where the grants were given, but is it possible to get a list of those who did receive the grants?
And I'm.
Okay, and.
Yep, we can follow up with that.
Okay, okay, and not just for this one, but for the grant program that, uh, that Katie talked about a few slides previously. The women-owned and the minority-owned and, and I, I just kind of like to see where those went and if it, was it pretty evenly distributed by the wards? I know she showed a map, but I, it went so fast, I, I couldn't really see it. So if maybe we could just send that out, that would be great.
Yes, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Yep, we'll include, um, a map, and we can also include a list of the, all the recipients.
Perfect.
Um, it looks like we have another raised hand, too.
Carl.
Oh, thank you, um, now county. Um, so regarding the streamlined, uh, outdoors seating process. Um, so is, would this be a good way to, a, a good time to look at, uh, streamlining, uh, processes that could stay, uh, in effect after COVID? For example, with the outdoor patios, and I, I know there weren't a lot of restaurants that were able to take advantage of this, but is, is there a, a lesson learned from COVID that we could embrace going forward to make it easier for uh, uh, restaurants to have outdoor seating?
That's a good question. I wonder, um, I think that's probably a Sue Ann response. Um, does Sue Ann have the ability to, to, uh, talk on here?
I'll make sure she does.
Okay.
Sue Ann, go ahead.
Council members, Mayor, that's, that is a good question, and I think, um, the lessons learned are going to lead us in that direction. We did waive some requirements such as site plan compliance uh, and some of the other underlying issues that would have to be looked at for patio expansion. There is probably a way to get that done. It's just going to take a little bit more process than we wanted to put into place for the Dine Out Des Moines, Des Moines Outdoor Seating.
Well, and I know some of this, um, uh, um, dovetails with the, uh, liquor permits and how it's attached to a location. I, I don't know, just, just, uh, any way we can encourage businesses in Des Moines, and so, so maybe the, some of these outdoor dining places, they can't serve, serve alcoholic drinks, but it gives them, uh, an outdoor seating that I think, um, is attractive to um, some residents in Des Moines and, 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 and might be, uh, a good side or something that sticks aft- after COVID, so. Please, please consider that as, as you move forward.
Yeah, and that, that's a good suggestion, and we will take that under advisement and continue to work on those, uh, outdoor seating areas.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lisa and Naomi, go ahead.
Okay, um, Katie, jumping back in here, I think, um, that mostly concludes the presentation. Lisa, do you want to advance to the next slide?
Sure.
Yep.
Um, as, as mentioned earlier, uh, the intent was to have quarterly updates for the council. And so, um, as of now, the, the schedule we anticipate is that in July, we can talk more in depth about the different housing programs and, um, have updated numbers on who's been assisted. In October, um, we're hoping to have some of the childcare programs going to, again, share with you the details of that. And then in January, the mental health programs. Uh, with that said, um, Naomi did get kicked off, but I think she is back on, and if she has her, um, the business owner's letter available, I think she can read it now before we take questions.
Yes, I am back. So sorry about that technological glitch there. So, um, the, the note we got said, "I don't know how to express my gratitude and how much this means to me. If the coronavirus wasn't a thing, I would give every person who was a part of this grant a hug and show you the tears of joy this brought. What you are doing for small businesses is literally keeping our dreams alive. Bless your hearts. I'm speechless, overjoyed, and love Des Moines that much more." Just wanted to share that with you. It was a nice sentiment.
I feel like that was a, actually a better place to put it, a very poetic ending before questions. Do you have any other questions for us?
Any other questions? Yeah, Josh.
So, one, I want to reiterate and thank staff for looking into the outdoor seating and making that permanent. I think there's value there. The question that I have, I've heard that there's maybe a bit of a backlog on getting the housing fund out the door or getting the appointments that are a precursor to eligibility. And I guess I wanted to ask about that, if there's a backlog, and then if there is, if there is anything that we can do on a temporary basis to help impact with their staffing levels or whatever would need to be done to try and streamline that process and get more people assistance quicker.
Sure, that's a good point. And you're absolutely correct, there is a backlog. So part of the reason that there is a backlog is that Impact anticipated having an online web-based application system to streamline applications and process payments. Problem is, they did run into some hiccups, which could not be foreseen. So they had anticipated that the web-based application system would have been live in mid-February, and we're still here today without it. So they've been taking appointments and calls with the way that they've been doing it for other programs and in the past with the previous CDBG Housing Assistance, which is primarily, like I said, on the phone and by appointment. So in terms, I do know that they are still working with getting that web-based application developed. And I haven't heard an update as to when they expect that to be ready. I think that's still unknown because they had to switch developers, from what I understand. But that being said, in terms of the rest of the country and locally, Des Moines is ahead of the game when it comes to dispersing these funds. I know there's some cities that are just getting around to allocating their CDBG funds for COVID for housing. And I know there's a lot of cities in the nation and other governments that haven't started their emergency rental assistance program. And I know IFA, I think IFA just started theirs here in the last few weeks. But I don't know the specific date. So that's a positive note, is that we did get on the ground fairly quickly compared to the rest of the nation. However, the rate at which processing applications has occurred is slower than what we anticipated. But, you know, we've still assisted more people since mid-February with the treasury funds than we did since September with the CDBG funds, just because there's more of it and more people know about this program. In terms of helping Impact streamline their processes, I'm not sure the answer to that. And I think we do have a call actually with Impact today to discuss something else. So, you know, I can definitely bring that up with them if they have any, anything that we can do to help. It's hard to say, though, because I think a lot of it is just, I know they're trying to hire staff, and a lot of it is just dependent on getting enough people in place and to process the applications and keep it moving forward. But as of this week, they have, I want to say, 2.3 million in the treasury funds encumbered, so at least obligated, and ready to go out here in the next couple of weeks. And that's a little less than half the allocation of 6.4 million. So I don't want to, you know, shed a negative light on what they're doing because they're definitely doing incredibly, an incredible amount of work to help people with housing assistance, even though, again, there's been some hiccups.
Yeah, absolutely. And if there's anything that we can do to help work through the hiccups a little faster or get those dollars out to folks who need it quicker, I'd love for us to do that. But I'm completely appreciative of all of the work and the additional work that administering a program like this takes for Impact. And I'm thankful that they've been a great partner in this process. The other question I have is the relationship to the state funding for this purpose. And if we run through our dollars, which I anticipate those dollars will be allocated fairly quickly, is there any eligibility for the state dollars? Or is there anything that we can do to work with that? Or are we entirely separate and no one in Des Moines is going to be eligible for those state dollars?
From what I understand, once we run out of our funds, we, our residents can access the state funds.
Right, so if that's the case, that just further underscores the importance of working with Impact to get the dollars that we have out the door as quickly as possible.
Ah, sure. Definitely.
Carl?
Thank you, Mayor County. I'm just checking in regarding the reimbursement checks for the carryout expenses. How are you doing at getting those checks sent out?
That's a good question. Katie Hernandez here. We are receiving all forms via the online form system. So those are able to be reviewed fairly quickly. And then attachments can be included, so we can review receipts and invoices and then accept the W9 that way. As far as the timeline for check distribution, once those are approved, it takes about 10 days to two weeks for the check to arrive to the restaurant. So sometimes there are just a couple of questions that staff has as follow-up to finalize the payment process. But once those are approved, it takes about 10 to 14 days.
All right. Well, so could you make a note to check on reimbursement checks for Court Avenue Brewing? So I think I sent a question up through Matt Anderson a couple of weeks ago, and someone was going to check why they hadn't been received yet as of through last week, the checks haven't been received. So
Yes.
No checks. I mean, so that's round one and round two of whatever the monthly submission period was. So and it would be great if you could include me in on what you find out about that. Thank you.
Yep, I will follow up on that.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you so much for that update. We have been really working hard on that assistance through the city and trying to get that money pushed out. And so thank you for that update. And let's hope that we can continue to help out all these individuals and businesses that truly need it. Scott, back to you again.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for our presenters, Lisa, Naomi, and Katie. What great work in being creative and getting these oftentimes, you know, first-time developed programs out to our businesses. So great, great work on that front. Well, the next topic is really going to be short. And it is our final. I checked in, we do not need additional time for the legislative. So I've got about 10 minutes, maybe at most, to give the council an update on broadband efforts. And I am actually going to share my screen because I put some notes together for the council. Let me know, Mayor, if you're able to see this attachment.
Yes.
Okay. Well, essentially, I wanted to touch base with council on several different fronts on the broadband efforts, broadband meaning high-speed internet. And when I talk about broadband, I really want the council to be brought up to speed that there are three aspects to internet that are crucial. And all three have to be addressed in order for our city to be successful in not only offering high-speed internet, but being able to afford it and to be able to know how best to utilize and activate the internet services that are available. And those three A words are access. That means the fiber, and that's what's going to be crucial throughout, is that it's fiber, not traditional twisted pear copper going back many, many generations of the older telephone technology. That was simply copper wiring. And then more recently, coax for cable TV. But rather, what's needed today with the technology is fiber optics. And getting that fiber optics is far and close to the actual users and the customers as possible, preferably all the way to the home. But there are some other technologies that allow to get it into the neighborhood, and coax takes over from there. So I won't get too deep into the technology. But access is having the technology accessible right to your home or small business. And then affordability is self-explanatory that the rates that would have to be paid, especially in this sense from homeowners, is actually affordable. And we're fairly close on that in what's available out there. But there is definitely assistance that's necessary for our lower-income households. So affordability is crucial as well. And then lastly, the activation. Activation is in part education and then also demonstrating and having a role probably for our community colleges and others to get out into our neighborhoods and actually demonstrate how useful having high-speed internet can be to our residents and small businesses. We've all quite aware of the ability to work from home that may be an option for some of our residents. There is clearly a whole swath of educational opportunities. And then also healthcare that can be provided to the home when you have high-speed internet available. And so we don't want to stop at just simply having the infrastructure in place and the affordability. But we need to push all the way through to activation. And you'll hear me talk about how some of our current vendors and interested vendors coming to Des Moines are going to address some of that activation. So again, I'm going to keep coming back to be successful with high-speed internet in our community. So here are some of the initiatives that are underway that you've heard pieces from me and updates. I thought I'd bring it together today. There is a regional effort to understand where gaps are occurring in the technology and the access standpoint with a little bit of the affordability. The group is led by our partnership, the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and 11 counties here in central Iowa. The purpose is to identify the gaps first and foremost in a realistic and accurate way. There's oftentimes some analysis out there from the FCC and others that talk about internet speeds that are terribly inaccurate, that may look at, as long as the access to fiber is available in some portions of a census block, that it's then recorded by the FCC that everybody in that census block has access to it. And that's a very inaccurate way to account for internet speeds. So there is a survey that has been designed and that is now activated in our communities, all 11 counties, to understand better what the true access to high-speed internet is on a home-by-home basis, small neighborhood aspect of it, not in this broad sweeping generalizations of whether or not it's available. That's going to be very helpful because then there's a better understanding. Once that survey is complete, it's got some very extensive GIS mapping as its foundation. So we have consultants that have been hired that are very good at this work with the county and city GIS officials helping out with that data. That would be hopefully available here in a couple of months to analyze, verify, and get some additional input from many of the vendors as well to best understand that data. So know that that effort is underway. It's a great partnership, private and public entities, to get that done. They will also look at potential corrections and technological opportunities to get more high-speed internet out into these same 11 communities after the surveying work is done. That will be more of a high-level discussion of what options are out there. And then additional work and groups, committees, if you will, would need to be formed to understand if there's a partnering option when it comes to the implementation. Obviously, the vendors will be very interested in being involved in those conversations at a later date. So that effort is underway. There have been discussions, the mayor and I have been in many discussions with our incumbent providers as well as potential vendors that would like to enter our market. The philosophy and the approach here has been based in the fact that telecom is provided by state franchise agreements, not local agreements that we would have with individual companies, but rather the media comms, CenturyLink, so the world that have authority, if you will, to be in our communities and our right-of-ways through more state and federal laws. And so the traditional cable TV was changed from a city-by-city franchise agreement to a statewide franchise and authorization many years ago. So the key here is for us to, since we don't have individual agreements with each provider, our approach has been to talk with these vendors and potential entrants into our market with what we can change to simplify our processes here at the city and look at our permitting processes in particular to make it easier for investment in our community of high-speed internet. We've been successful in working with our engineering department. Kudos to Steve and his crew, looking at how we can change some of our permitting process to be in our right-of-way such that they are more area-focused and not the more traditional one street by the next street that is reflective of an incremental change that an incumbent would do. Obviously, MediaCom, CenturyLink, and the other incumbents have put their investment into Des Moines over many generations and several decades. And so they are on an incremental approach. And that's how our permitting has been set up. The changes that engineering department has been able to make and will be implementing this summer is an opportunity for more broadly defining the permits by area, by a neighborhood, for instance, and say that they will be putting fiber in this neighborhood over the next two weeks, as an example, and having an entire neighborhood encompassed within one permit. So those are the type of changes and the approach that we are taking in our conversations with each of these potential providers, not to have any negotiations that would lead to a- Not to have any negotiations that would lead to a exclusive agreement in any way, but rather what barriers can we remove at the city so that any provider would have the same opportunity to jump in and invest in our neighborhoods and our community with high speed internet? And so very briefly, I'll go through the conversations and who we're we're dealing with. MetroNet is the furthest along as they are working with neighboring communities. They have what is what they're calling these memorandum of agreements. We do not know if that's the approach they're going to end up with with us as we have actually, again, changed some of our processes for everyone to accommodate what what would typically be an agreement that they might have with the community. So they may not even need an agreement, in other words, with us to be able to move forward with what they intend to do, which is put fiber all the way to the home in Des Moines, similar to other markets. So those conversations have been going well. It's been about educating them with our current processes. And again, where can we make adjustments? Their intent is to to move forward yet this calendar year with with different communities in central Iowa. So I'm doing everything I can to make sure that we look appealing to them to to get started ASAP as well. Google was another community or company that came to town and have had many conversations with us about their interest also in in fiber throughout Des Moines. Making it very clear, they they want it to be 100% coverage, which is great. That is something that we talk about with all of all of the potential providers. We want to make sure that it's built out entirely throughout our community. The model they used in West Des Moines is is very different than what we're going to be able to do. That I won't go into it too much, but essentially, West Des Moines was willing to to help pay for and and able to pay for quite a bit of conduit throughout their community. We're talking tens of millions of dollars for the size of West Des Moines as an investment by the by the local government that would put us at a price tag of of probably close to $100 million if if we were to have used that model. So in talking with with Google, they were very good about recognizing we're not in that same position to make that type of an investment and therefore look at other models. And they've been very creative in doing so, bringing in additional partners and those communications have also been productive. And so those will continue along the same methodology, if you will, that what is it that are barriers that 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 we can remove here within Des Moines? And then lastly, MediaCom has been very active in this market as they have pushed fiber deeper into some of our neighborhoods and a willingness to continue to do that. They have also looked at a more wide sweeping change opportunity that they advertised a few months back with a 10 gig service that they have up and running in a small neighborhood up in Ames, Iowa. And the mayor and I had the opportunity to go up and and actually see that in action in a couple of the homes that they have there. Pretty amazing technology demonstrations, you might imagine in all those areas I mentioned before, working from home, education and healthcare, security, and it went far beyond that. Obviously, entertainment, things of that nature as well. So a bright future with all the different services that are truly available to to communities that invest in in this type of of technology. So we know that MediaCom is incredibly interested in in continuing their investments in Des Moines as well. So I I see this as a real opportunity to have some competitive nature in all of all these conversations. Again, nothing that we would, at this point, that I see as necessary to be exclusive to any one provider, but rather open to all. I'll pause for a second, maybe mayor, to see if there's any questions on that before I move on to the next.
Yeah, does anybody have any quick questions? It looks like Bill.
Thanks, Mayor. Scott, you know, this is right in my wheelhouse. That's where my all my training was. I'm glad to see we're not going for an exclusive agreement. I think that leads for service and and higher prices anyway. One thing, the key, I think you've hit the nail on the head, that the key is getting access to our right of ways. One thing, and I have I've been thinking about this for quite some time. You know, we're after listening to Steve's approach and doing a lot of road construction that that we're going to do, like in our side, it's the Second Avenue. And then right in front of my house, the Franklin Avenue reconstruction. Can we include, when we start doing some of these projects, provide conduit ahead of time so we don't have to go back in and tear things up? And I think we can get a double benefit in addition to the MediaComs or anybody else that might want to use that conduit, provide it also for Mid American Energy, so we can start to get some of the overhead lines back underground. I think that's going to go a long ways to making our our community look better, light cleaner and less prone to disruption over the long run by having overhead wires. We have MediaCom, sometimes CenturyLink. But I think if we get everything, if we start to put a conduit system in as we're going along, I think that's going to go a long ways to help make anybody that wants to do business here in the city a lot easier to do it. And we have a control over where it goes into play. But I guess I'm looking to you. What are your thoughts, Scott?
Yeah, and so I have had that conversation with engineering with with projects that are underway. They had already started doing some of that with previous projects. We will continue to lean forward on providing that conduit where where it makes sense with a reconstruction project underway. But understand that, you know, that would be the list of projects we went through this morning that that we know are occurring in the next year or two at most. The all these providers are very anxious to to get in the ground as quickly as possible. So their investments would, as I understand it, take about two to two and a half years to get the whole city covered. And so that there would be some of our projects that could be helpful with conduit being provided. But understand that that they're not going to wait for us to get construction projects, three, four, five years down the road to get that done. So they're going to get out in front of us pretty quickly once they get, once they start to break ground. But we can do our part with the projects that we have underway, absolutely.
So and and in addition to that, do you think that I see you're going to be into talking about the stimulus support from the state? The federal government's going to start getting into that as well with the the latest legislation that's out there. Can we use some of that money to get this conduit system put in place?
It's a great question. So we are looking at that, but I am not terribly optimistic that the rules will be such that we we would take take advantage of that as a public asset. And so some of these stimulus dollars are going to be available to the private side. So I fully expect the vendors to to find ways to tap into some of those funds as well. And so I, again, they're they're ready to go. And so they they will probably not be able to wait for some of these federal stimulus funds to produce a public conduit system. Does that make sense?
Kind of, you know, I I would hope that that we they would take a more broader look at what's best to provide for for everywhere, the city, county, whatever. But I I understand too, before I retired, the cost of boring has come tremendously down. So I think that they have a pretty good avenue to get a start on. I just wish we could be in that same speed rather than behind the the vendors, so we have somewhat control over the right of way. Just my thoughts.
Scott, I see that Carl's got his hand up, but I've got to ask you just sort of a follow up to Bill's question. You know, we've got some major projects going now, whether it's on Sixth Avenue or Second Avenue or Fluor Drive or even Ingersoll that we talked about a little while ago. Are they making those provisions in those projects, not only with the conduit to look at the broadband, but try to get some of these utilities underground? I mean, it looks like on Fluor Drive, they're taking down all the old power line poles. They're putting up new poles and they're digging holes and doing all kinds of stuff up and down Fluor Drive. Why aren't they putting that all underground?
So I know that that is reviewed. I'm looking now to see if, I don't know if maybe Pam has any more detail, but every time one of those reconstruction projects gets started, they look at cost of undergrounding, they look at consolidating the different utilities. Pam, do you?
I'm Mayor and Councilwoman Pam Cooksey, Assistant City Manager. This is looked at on every project and there's discussions with Mid-Am on how can we work together? A lot of it deals with their franchise and what they're able to do and not able to do. There were some changes. We put in conduit along Indianola that Mid-Am was able to use. Since that time, there's been changes that prevent that type of partnership from working. So Mid-Am is required to relocate when we need them to relocate, but they're not required to go underground. We've worked on them with streetscapes to minimize the amount of crosswires, you know, over the roadway. But we really don't have any mechanism other than if we wanted to fully fund it to go underground. I I know everyone's familiar with the hard discussions we had along Second Avenue and some of some of what those costs were. So when we can look at either minimizing overhead or looking at sharing conduit, we do. But Mid-Am won't go in shared conduit. We're essentially putting that conduit in the ground for them.
Well, it's interesting because they had a little bit of a problem last summer when we saw the derecho come through. They had hundreds of lines down that one would think that they would want to think a little more forwardly and how they can prevent that sort of thing, especially along their major transition lines and thoroughfares. But at any rate, sorry, Carl and Linda for jumping in there. Carl, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor County. So is the Scott, do you know if there's a ward or particular neighborhood that has the slowest speeds or in most need of a of an upgrade?
That is, that is the effort of the broadband initiative that I first spoke about to have granular understanding of what's available neighborhood to neighborhood. So we do not have that today.
Okay, well, a ward two resident thinks that they have the slowest internet speeds in the whole city. I'd just be be curious to hear where those biggest holes are. And certainly, you know, we want to, when we offer broadband, we we want to do that with an equity lens and not just the that what 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 some people would describe as the nicest.
Yeah, with a market, maybe. Yeah, I have actually talked to quite a few residents as well across our city and and the war two member you may be talking about was a lady that actually lives next to the softball fields up there in the Northeast. And my understanding is really all they have is the twisted copper hair, which is not very good. But yes, I I've heard from a lot of our residents across the city. And it it will be very telling to have that survey complete and know where all the gaps are.
Right, Linda?
I I find the conversation about Mid-American very interesting and you know, we're on Fluor Drive and we're doing all this road construction. It seems like on almost every plan and zoning meeting, when somebody wants to come in and redevelop, whether it's QuickTrip or whoever it is, the city is saying, no, you have to put the utilities underground, which is a huge expense. And it's, I just find it interesting, how can we tell people that are making investment in our city, you have to put the the utilities underground. But I, as a city, when I'm already there and I'm already digging up things, we don't have to put it in underground. I I'm just wondering how how that, how can we have a policy like that?
There's the difference between service lines and what serves the private business or private residence and the transmission and distribution lines of the of the utility. We have an underground district where we can require the utilities to be underground. We don't have that ordinance or requirement outside of that district. And a lot of those costs make it prohibitively expensive. I don't know if you remember some of the discussions we had. I think it was the QuickTrip on Fluor Drive that was moving and the transmission lines that are next to them. In order to put those underground, it was literally millions of dollars. And there was no way to do that, no way to require the utility to do that. And there was no way for the city to provide that type of subsidy, you know, or for the business to afford that type of expense. So the difference is the service lines versus the actual utility lines.
Thank you.
So Mayor, the last comments you'll see on this topic is just that there is federal funding available as as Councilman Gray mentioned, both in the infrastructure and the technology itself, as well as a subsidy program that I'm keeping my eye on as it gets developed. It's there's not final answers on it yet, but what we do know is that it will have likely an ability to have $50 a month per household available for high speed internet. And they're trying to figure out exactly how that could be distributed and and administered. So that is very encouraging that we see our federal government treating high speed internet as an essential utility. Not a whole lot dissimilar from gas and electric and water and sewer. So if as that matures and we have more detail, I'll share that with with council. But it also lead it leads to the conversation of trying to simplify how many of these programs are out there and possibly into a one stop shop opportunity for when we have our Des Moines residents that are in need of of some of these subsidy dollars, whether it be gas and electric or water, sewer, or even now potentially high speed internet. They're likely to need that assistance in all fronts, all utility costs. So it would be far helpful to put those into a very simple singular program and work with our Des Moines Water Works on the billing that they do and work with Impact again, who handles the LiHeep, which is the gas and electric assistance. And then also combine it with this new entrant, if you will, with telecom. So we'll be watching all of these efforts and additional dollars that may become available and talking with these same vendors that I mentioned about how they would tap into it to make sure Des Moines gets their fair share of of these investments as well. So again, I end the conversation with access affordability and activation are all crucial to make sure we're successful in in high speed internet to our residents. Any additional questions of me?
Linda, I see your hands still up.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. I just didn't lower it.
No, no, that's all right. Anybody else?
Well, again, thank you to our engineering department and IT as well, as we do have some of our own fiber with traffic signals and with traffic signals and and facilities, connecting our facilities, things of that nature. So IT and and engineering have been incredibly helpful. And then legal legal department as well as we, as we look at some of these other agreements that other cities have with some of these new vendors. We're looking at better ways to handle some of those legal concerns and I've gotten great assistance from our depart legal department. So thank you for all of those.
Right, Scott, anything else?
So that's all on that topic, and it actually covers the rest of the the agenda. So we're, I think that might finish it up, Mayor.
All right, well, I thank everybody for their patience in the presentations of everybody today. And so we finished a little earlier than we had expected. So let's all take advantage of that, grab a quick bite to eat. And Scott, sounds like we got a lot of work to do, but I am and I think the council as well is excited about the progress we're making in so many of these areas. Let's keep up the great work and council, thank you for all your input today. And with that, let's say this meeting is adjourned.